Full meeting of Monday, April 27, 2020, 6:00 PM. Roll call, please, Kathy.
Dick Anderson. Judy Casper. I see our Deanna Hinton.
Yes, here.
Riley Hogland.
Here.
Diane Kuz.
Present.
Rick Mark.
I'm here.
And Mitch Parsons.
Here.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna suspend the pledge of allegiance, if that's all right. But I would also need to amend the agenda, if we can, under a K item, add a fourth resolution. And that would be Resolution 2020-11. From our actions earlier this morning, or earlier today. If that's all right with council? Hearing no objection? All right, we don't have any items, and this would probably be a good time to remind the public that we are taking public comments. And the way that happens is you come in through either the council chambers, or through the public comments at LincolnCity.org. And Mr. Chandler, has there been any public comments? Oh, great, would you read them to us?
First comment came in today at 9:31 from Carol Coffel. And she writes, "Even though short-term lodging is currently closed and traffic is somewhat decreased in our neighborhood, we're still seeing up to a dozen or more unfamiliar people a day walk past our house, including children. We also see now Meredith Lodging has scheduled lodging in our neighborhood for May 1st. When is the official short-term lodging ban going to be lifted? Because it is obviously people, because it is obvious, people are not following the governor's stay-at-home guidelines, and somehow VRD owners seem to be getting around the city's short-term lodging ban. According to one of my neighbors, the police seemed reluctant and dismissive of her concerns about this ban being enforced when she called about unknown occupants in a VRD house. They also asked her if she was going to be a troublemaker like the people in the greenhouse on the corner, which is us. This is not acceptable behavior by any officer of the Lincoln City Police Department. Again, the question stands, when is the ban going to be lifted? Carol and Kevin Coffel, Lincoln City." Second email came from Ken Corson at 3:09 PM today. "In listening to the Newport special meeting, it sounds as if the county has voted to extend the emergency act to May 31, 2020. How does this affect the lodging shutdown in Lincoln City? And where can we get current information on this matter? We have seen several rental agencies opening dates on their websites as being able to accept reservations. Some clarity would be appreciated. We are a small lodging facility here in Lincoln City and have guests wondering when they'll be able to come and visit the beach. Thank you for your diligence in this matter, Ken Corson."
So, Mr. Chandler, since both of those have to do with short-term rentals, I'm trying to remember, is there information on the website, the city website, or how would someone be communicated with, to kind of answer their question?
Well, first of all, in light of the actions that the city council took today, and the extension of the emergency order that I did immediately following your actions, we typed up and put together a press release, plus a letter that we will email out to all of the lodging industries that we have email addresses on. So, we will start getting that word out first thing in the morning.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, any, I guess, no other public comments? Thank you for those. And it shows the system must be working, if people are able to find and make comments, and they really ought to. Again, that's publiccomments@LincolnCity.org. So if we can then move into public hearings, and we have a public hearing for disposition of city property. And Mr. Appicello?
Okay, I've written up this report. This is really more Allison's project, but I'll go through it. There is a resolution later on the agenda, 2020-09, which authorizes execution of an option agreement for the disposition of city-owned property for affordable housing purposes. This is the property behind the property that was referenced earlier that we recently acquired, just north of the church, off of northeast 25th, I believe it is. And the major advertised condition on the option is that we have another public hearing and approve and execute a disposition and development agreement. Because frankly, we're not quite there yet. We have, and council has indicated a willingness to do certain things, they have indicated a willingness to do certain things, but what they're doing is applying for tax increment, not, sorry, not tax increment.
Low income.
Low-income tax credit. And because they're applying for that, and there's a process, and we're not sure if they'll get the funding this time, basically, we're, we put together, they put together, requested an option agreement, I revised it, they tweaked it, so it's gone back and forth a couple times. There was issue whether or not there were some typos, one of the paragraphs didn't get some cross-references changed, paragraph 10 is supposed to reference some sub-paragraphs in paragraph 10, not paragraph 9, so my assistant has corrected that for the signature copy. Just some cross-reference and errors. This was, again, this is notice 221-725, public hearing, because the statute specifically mentions option agreements. Although this isn't a lease option, it's still an option agreement. So in abundance of caution, we're having a public hearing. Again, this is one of those where only residents may speak. A resident of the city, I don't know if we have any public testimony, but it is a public hearing, so we should request any public that's in attendance, or wants to call in to testify. The major terms are, we're going to have another public hearing, and we're going to have to reach an agreement in a disposition and development agreement. This option is basically just to get us, get them to the point where they can evidence site control, and so they can make application for the tax credit. Allison, is there anything you want to add?
Nothing, Allison?
No, thank you, Richard.
Sorry, I missed you, Allison, down on the lower shelf here of my screen. All right, so I, does anybody have, Mr. Chandler, or Allison, get any comments in from the public regarding this topic?
No.
I just, I just checked my email, and I don't have anything.
Okay. All right. With that, then, I'd make a, take a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. So moved from Mr. Hogland. We have a second from Mr. Mark. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay?
What?
All right, so it's passed to close the public hearing.
So you have a resolution on the agenda later?
Well, right, right now, matter of fact. Let's go down the, down the list of Resolution 2020-09.
We just need a motion to approve the resolution. I don't have to read the resolution.
No, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll raise my hand.
There you go.
I'd like to move to approve the Resolution 2020-09, Option for Agreement for Disposition of City Real Property to Nonprofit Organization for Purposes of Affordable Housing.
We have a second from Casper. Thank you. Motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. You want to do a roll call, Kathy?
Sure. Deanna?
Yes.
Can I just clarify, excuse me, can I just clarify, that's with the typographical changes.
Thank you.
Okay, Deanna Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hogland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, we have a Resolution 2020-10 for budget transfers. Must be Debbie there.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Could I just mention that the resolution authorizes execution of the option agreement as well? I don't know if you wanted to make it separate, or just the resolution was probably okay.
Since that, that's what it authorizes, yep. Okay. Debbie, were you gonna take the budget?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, yeah, I can.
Now we can.
Okay, thank you. So, Resolution, this resolution has two items in it. The first one is to move 635,000 out of the contingency in the Explore Lincoln City Fund into materials and services, and that is about one month's worth of transient room tax revenues. And that is in anticipation of council's desire to fund a COVID-19 A package in that amount. I would note that since this is coming from transient room taxes, it is subject to the restrictions on how you can spend transient room taxes. So that's just moving from contingency to materials and services. The contingency, we did have some money in contingencies in anticipation of building a new visitor's center. And if we move this money out of contingency, that would mean we'd have to delay the building of the, of the new visitor's center at D River. The second item, the second item in the resolution is $10,000 to move from the general fund contingency into the police budget, and this is due to the recent officer-involved shooting that happened. According to the Orion Senate Bill 111 from 2007, the city is required to provide some counseling for those officers that were involved. And we are expecting to receive about $5,000 in grant, in a grant from CIS to help offset this cost. And those are the two items in this resolution.
And I, Kathy, or Debbie, or Ron, and I didn't go back and check, but I thought at our last council meeting, when we put this forward, we talked about 500,000. And I know that he did take a look at, so they're, they must be recommending the 635, but is that?
When we, when, when I put this together for the subcommittee, that was the original intent, was to look at $500,000. As we looked at the, how far that would go, and the number of businesses that are impacted by this, I talked with Ed and felt that we could essentially make it equal to one month's transient room tax, which is about that, just a little bit more than that, $635,000. That, as we'll get into in just a few minutes, roughly spreads it to about, depending on how you come up with the split, probably about 160 businesses that could be affected, 80 in the hotels and hotel area, and 80 in the, in the retail area.
Okay, all right. But that helps, because it's just a different number than what I was thinking, so, thank you. Any other questions from council? Hearing none, then I entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion from Mr. Hogland, with a second from Ms. Hinton. Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Kathy.
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, then this is the addition we added to the agenda, and this is Resolution 2020-11.
Well, I basically wrote this during your meeting earlier, tried to summarize what was going on, and asked for approval of Resolution 2020-11. I added a few things, just to ratify what Ron has previously done, and it does two things, it extends the emergency as a council resolution to the May 31 date, and it also officially concurs with the county action. Further, again, ratifies what Ron has already done in his different orders and actions. I thought it was just something for cleanup, we could just get it done tonight.
Yeah, oh, great. Yes, Ron?
Mr. Mayor, since we probably have a lot of people that are watching tonight, and will be watching, with the actions that you take, and then the adoptions of this resolution, I thought it might be appropriate to just read what is in 320, County Order 32385, which has now been carried forward, just to make sure that that's clear. Are you okay with that?
Yes, that'd be great.
Thank you. So it was ordered, it was ordered by the county and ratified by the cities, that county and city parks are closed to camping, except for camp hosts and/or other persons authorized by the city, the county or the city for stays 30 days or longer until the emergency ends. All short-term rentals defined as rentals of a duration of less than 30 days in vacation rental dwellings or short-term dwellings, and home stay lodgings are prohibited in Lincoln County until the declared emergency ends, which is now May 31, the date that this has been extended to, or this prohibition is otherwise ended or modified by a separate order of the Board of Commissioners, whichever occurs first. All hotels and motels, RV parks, and private campgrounds, and similar lodgings or housing not identified above are closed to short-term rentals of less than 30 days, except as follows. Stays for 30 days or longer are allowed, Lincoln County residents affecting a COVID-19 self-quarantine, or who have moved from their local residence in order to allow a family member or roommate to self-quarantine in their local residence. Families and/or individuals residing in lodging for less than 30 days, if this is their only means of shelter, includes but is not limited to vouchers for stay provided by local and regional governments or nonprofit agencies. Employees of the facility provided lodging as required, as a requirement or benefit of their employment. Patients or families of patients receiving medical care at local facilities. Essential workers, including but not limited to doctors, nurses, other health staff, home and healthcare workers, Coast Guard members, truck drivers, and supply workers, or supply providers. Workers in the counties whose employer pays for lodging. Construction workers on local projects, including public contractors. Utility crews and other persons whose work in the county requires temporary accommodations. Other persons or categories of people who, city managers, or county council being consistent with the intent of disorder after the consultation with the local public health administrator. All pools, spas, and other public bathing facilities are closed at lodging properties for the duration of this order.
Thank you, Ron. And then, yes, stated earlier, you'll, you'll be putting out a press release, and continue to hang this stuff on the website, so it's on the front page. Is that pretty typical actions we've taken?
It is. We'll, we'll get the word out through social media, through old-fashioned mail, through email, and, and get it out as quickly as we can. I do know that some, some of the lodging industry had called me and said, when can we start taking orders? And I had instructed them that I knew that this action was coming, that they should not get too anxious, and now that it's been adopted, we'll get it out.
Thank you. I might note, if I can, just to pass on some information that, because I think we all get emails and concerns about people visiting houses. I asked our planning department, Anne Marie, if she had done any kind of checking of property managers to see if they were renting, and she's indicated that they, they, she has checked, that there's, sure, her staff has done some review, watched the websites, and to their knowledge, haven't come across any that are renting. I also talked to the chief of police, he's indicated that when his officers go out, that so far, they haven't found a, an illegal operation. So, you know, I think it's concerning for everyone, and we should, you know, honor that concern, give people the non-emergency number to call and report, and code enforcement can check. But I, I think this, too, pushes it, it's, it indicates the health and safety first, but at the same time, this afternoon, we had a lot of discussion about, you know, how do we bring the economy back on in Lincoln City? So that needs to be at our mind as well. Council Hinton?
Hi, sorry to do it that way, but I thought it was most annoying. I, I also got a report, I also got a report from Chief Palmer, and in his report, he said that they, the VRD checks that they did, and this is through, I think the 27th, that's today, so that's wrong, anyway, the 17th, sorry, that they did VRD checks and hotels, 97 of those, and illegal renters, there were six of them, and the police told them to leave. And legally renting, there were six he found, and owner occupied 24. So that was, that was what he sent.
Great, thank you. Council Hogland, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just.
Lost, lost your audio.
How about now?
Yeah, okay.
I was just, you know, wanted to talk more about that, you know, how are they doing, how the checks are being done, and, you know, if it's complaint-driven, again, or if it's we're actively seeking and going to tripping.com, or whatever those amount, you know, the websites that take into all of the other things, to make sure that's something that we're actively doing it, and not, and not simply complaint-driven. So I don't, I don't know where we're at on that. And then, secondly, the open spaces, it was brought up in the meeting this morning, or this afternoon, and I don't know how Newport handled that situation, or how we as the city are looking at that process of going forward about our own residents, in our own locals, our own local open spaces, and to talk more about that, so, those are, those two things.
Any other thoughts on this subject, information sharing? Okay. All right, yep, oh.
Me too. I can't, I can't address how we, how we are identifying people that may be violating. It's two-part, it's a two-part process. The first is that it is quite a bit complaint-driven. We, as we, as we receive complaints, our police officers look for those, and as was mentioned earlier, we do have an employee that devotes his time to vacation rental dwelling enforcement, and he is part of our planning department, and they have been actively researching who is, who is marketing, who's not marketing, and, and then taking appropriate action to get that to the police department.
Great, thank you, Ron. All right, you still got your hand up, Mr. Hogland?
If we could just, if we could just make sure that the houses on Airbnb seem to be the ones that are most active, and saying, it's for the whole month, so I don't know how, you know, I'm gonna rent it to you for 400, you know, the cost of a weekend, but for the whole month. So, you know, there's, there's a, just trying to find that out, you know, and it protect our residents that way.
All right, Council Hinton?
Hi, again, I, I can't find it, but there were, I think this resolution that we just passed is gonna clarify a lot of things, because there's a lot of confusion, like, like Council Hogland was talking about, with Airbnb, they have like a banner across the top or somewhere saying, you know, check with your local folks to find out about when they can start renting, but it's not real clear, it is confusing in some of the sites. And I also wanted to ask the question for us to think about, if it's time to send a letter to the VRD owners and the second homeowners, to let them know that the, the back-and-forth travel that they're making from their home in the valley back to here is inappropriate, inappropriate, they need to choose one and stay there, and they are not doing that, at least through the information that I've been receiving, and that I can see out my window. And it just continues the back-and-forth, and I think that's not appropriate, and it certainly doesn't follow the, the governor's stay-home ordinance, the essential travel that I don't.
Flip them again! Sorry, guys, yelling at my kids.
Oh, okay, I know you're yelling at me, I thought I didn't do anything, but.
Making dinner, sorry, guys.
Anyway, I just want to ask that question, I think it's important to let people know, I, I don't know all the email addresses of the homes around me that are second-in-VRD owners, but I have tried to get them to realize we have an ordinance, and that they need to, or an order, and they need to follow it, but I think it'd be important to let them all know, because there's confusion, there have been families, members that are not of their household coming too, so those are visitors, and so it's hard to, it's hard for the police to go after people and try and educate them, to get them, you know, to pack up and go home, if that's what they need to do, or if it's okay if they stay. And there are friends staying, I mean, we just, I think it'd be nice if we could just send a clarifying letter from the city to folks who have second homes and VRD ownerships here, just to let them know what our order states, so it's clear.
Well, if, if I can, and let me butt in, I don't think it's gonna get any clearer than it is, because it's loosey-goosey now. I would disagree that the governor's statement hasn't been as clear and as firm as you'd like it to be. And, and so, you know, we're kind of backing in, using that in our own. I, I think your suggestion might, you know, if we can do it, I don't know how practical it is to, to write a letter, or postcard to all our second home, I don't know that we know, have that list of just kind of some kind of educational letter. letter, say, you know, in essence, we know you own a home here, it's not your primary residence, until the virus is over, we'd, you know, ask you not to come back and forth. I don't know, Ron, is that a list that, that we have readily available of second, second home, or, we obviously have VRD owners?
It's, it, the last time we really did a comprehensive look at this was when we did the housing needs analysis that established that we had a third of the homes. I have not been able to dig up a, an address list, and I have no idea, and why, yes, I do have an idea. I know we don't have email addresses to all of those homes, and so it would, we would to some through our water billing, but most of them, we would not.
I would just say that that probably isn't so hard. Everybody pays their water bill, and if there are, if there are addresses that you mail the water bill to are out of Lincoln City or out of the county, I think that'd be pretty easy to pluck those out and put together a mailing list. I just think they need to be either warned or educated or something, because they do have a right to be on their property. I don't argue that at all. But they need to choose one and stay there, which they are not doing.
Well, I think that's the piece that's up question. So, I don't want to, but I think an educational letter is a good suggestion. If, if we can, you know, come up and, without a lot of difficulty, Ron, some kind of a letter out to folks, maybe it is from the water billing that, out of the area or something.
Well, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah. Just, you know, check before. So, you know, we've heard you, Councilor Hinton, and you're good about bringing it up and continue to bring it up. And I think as people continue to watch these council meetings and everything else, you know, the word will hopefully get out as well. All right. Let's move on to agenda, special order of business. We've got COVID-19 emergency aid package.
I'm going to take over your screen here, and.
Okay.
Sorry. Judy has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was, I was just going to add something at the end here, where, just for people who didn't hear our conversation this afternoon, that there was discussion of having coordinated coastal counties work together in these timelines.
Good point.
As picking in, and also as having the same resolutions. So, we're all doing the same timelines.
Right.
Just so people know.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you for that reminder.
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have, that we had a motion, a motion or a second on that one, or a vote?
On, oh, on the budget?
On the resolution 2020-11.
Oh. All right. Well, so let's do, entertain a motion for a resolution 2020-11.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution 2020-11.
I can.
We have a motion from Councilor Casper, with a second from Mr. Hoagland. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Kathy. All right. Ron, it's yours.
Okay. You should have on your screen a document that's titled, "The City of Lincoln City COVID-19 Economic Aid Program." Okay. At your last council meeting, you had created a subcommittee of the city council members, and then had some staff and a couple of residents who participated in the discussion, to create a, an economic aid program that would be, that, to bring back to you, as we initially, as we discussed just a few minutes ago, the initial amount was a half million dollars in two, well, a million dollars in two different formats. In both of those cases, I took the numbers, reworked them a little bit, and came back with a proposal to the subcommittee of $635,000 in each case. There were a couple of other requests that had been added to this, so there's really four parts to this that we'll discuss tonight. The subcommittee met twice. They met as recently as last Friday, and they did not come up with a consensus. So, what they will be doing tonight is making their individual recommendations to you. Councilor Casper had sent me a note earlier. It got, it was sent to a wrong file, and so I wasn't able to, to answer a question. But the question was essentially, will the subcommittee vote and then present something to the city council? Answer is no on that. They'll prevent, present their each individual recommendations as to what they think should be done. In the areas where they did have consensus, I took that, put it into the program. Where they did not, I've left it in red, and so that they and you would be able to, to see what we were talking about. So, the item one, or the first part of this program, is the $635,000 that you just approved, taking out a contingency in the Explore Lincoln City Fund and pointing it in their materials and services. Those funds would be spent on purchases of goods and services that Explore Lincoln City would then use over time to, to promote tourism. They would be put into packages and things like that, and presented as a way to, to encourage our tourists to come as part of our recovery from the pandemic that we're dealing with. I should point out that all purchases that they will do will be, as Debbie talked about, they will be in compliance with the restrictions on transient room tax, since that's where the funds come from. The first item that we just, that was discussed, and which is in red, which means that it was not a consensus on this, was how we split our businesses into two groups, those that were in the lodging business and those that were in the non-loging businesses. The proposal that I made to the, to the subcommittee was that $235,000 would go to the lodging businesses, and $400,000 would go to the non-loging business. I was asked how I came up with that split. In the lodging business, we looked at the amount that should be available to the, to the businesses, and essentially, it is the average, it is, it is one, it is the average of one month's transient room tax, gross room, not transient, gross room rent. We get that information regularly, so we know how much each, each participant in the lodging business that has an occupational tax permit receives. And so, some of them have over $5,000 a month in gross room rent, others have much less than that, less than $1,000. And so, the first proposal that we considered was that the amount that they would be eligible for is that average one-month gross room rent, up to $5,000. Depending on who applies, that would be somewhere between 47 and about 123, 124 businesses that would be eligible, roughly about an average of, an average of 80, or what I anticipate would probably be around 80. In the area of the $400,000, and the initial proposal was that if you qualified, you would receive a $5,000 grant. That was not a consensus item, and so I'll discuss that in a minute. And in that case, I simply took 400,000, divided it by 5,000, and you get 80. So, about 80 in each group that would, would receive assistance. So, again, that's the, as you go through this, before you make a decision if you want to do this, that's one of the informations that you, one of the things that you need to put, decide upon first. The second, for lodging businesses, is eligibility. They must have been, they must be affected by the emergency declaration. They must have a city of Lincoln City Occupational Tax Permit, and have been in business in Lincoln City for one year. They must be a business identified in Lincoln, in the Lincoln County Order 32385, which are hotels, motels, RV parks, private campgrounds, and short-term rentals defined as rentals of a duration of less than 30. The facility must be located in Lincoln City. Preference would be given to owners of vacation rental dwellings whose primary residence is in Lincoln City. And then, national and interstate chains, including franchise ownership and management companies, are ineligible. Part of the discussion that we had that was not a consensus was interstate chains and friendship, franchise ownership. The other part is the Oregon interstate chains would be permitted to, or would be eligible for these funds. The amount that would be available is one month's average gross room income, up to $5,000. And this amount would be calculated based on the 2019 transient room tax findings. One grant per business owner and/or immediate family member of the business owner, who's defined as spouse, parents, grandparents, children, adopted half and stepchildren, grandchildren, siblings, in-laws, mother, father, brother, sister, daughter, and son. And then, the final part for the lodging industry is that the business, the expense for the grant has to be a business expense. Any questions on the lodging before I leave that? And I might point out, once I'm done, then I'm going to just turn it over to the subcommittee members to take it from there.
Right. With the shared screen, I'm having trouble seeing who might have their hand up, so.
Let me stop the share.
Yeah, what, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay. Questions on that portion? Ron, then I will. So, you said that the dollar amounts are up in the air as far as the split, but going down to the eligibility, I'm wondering why we limited to Lincoln County Order, the business that the, well, I guess because it's lodging. So, that, that answers my question, because the governor's executive order didn't touch lodging, we did. So, oh, gotcha.
In the next one, in the next, the non-loging, you'll find an expansion of that.
Yeah. So, then, going on down, why on the vacation rental dwellings whose primary residence is in Lincoln City? Why is that, why was that a criteria? And I, I don't know, maybe the subcommittee members want to fly in. Rick?
Yeah. Let me just say, you know, in the subcommittee, we really delved, we tried, you know, to delve into details. What are we missing? You know, what do we need to consider? And, and we didn't necessarily agree, and there's something we just disagreed on, but, but I think some of these elements, I, I think maybe we're closer in agreement than we might realize. And part of the concern we had was, this money's only going to go so far, and we can't please everybody. We just simply cannot give a reasonable amount of money to everybody. So, at least in my mind, I think part of the thinking on a lot of what you're seeing here was, how do we narrow the pool? And I, I think that's why, in my mind, anyway, limiting to grant to a Lincoln City, or someone of the primary residence in Lincoln City, sort of made sense along that line. It was a way to, to help narrow the pool, and we know that the money's staying in the city, rather than going to candy or something, you know? So, I think that's, and, and let me, and let me just, along that line, just staying on the, this first page, I don't know if it's time for this, but I would express that I am in favor of the, the split that's here in the red, and also, also the language under eligibility. I would, I would vote for that. So, there's nothing else under the lodging that I would have any disagreement with. I don't know how the others feel.
So, I guess I'm, I'm still not convinced on those last two. Also, the national chains, I looked at those and saying, the city is losing transit room tax. These all contribute, whether you're a owner and, or a corporation, or, you know, and they employ people locally who are out of work. And so, you know, you're right, 5,000 doesn't go very far, and that's a good point. But I, I was just kind of surprised when I saw that, that you'd put, if anything, I probably would have done an aging factor on how long have you been here, rather than, you know, how long you've had your license or something, to have the older ones, you know, if, if you just got a VRD license the last two years, you're not eligible or something. But I, I was just surprised at that kind of breakout, but that's me. Any other comments? Riley?
All right. So, yeah, so that was, I think, the idea was that the, the money would, would stay in town, and that those national chains or interstate, interstate businesses would have more funds available to them, and with us using our money, we're trying to stay local is what I believe, you know, I was trying to ensure. I'm not, I'm not in favor of a defaulted $5,000 per applicant. I would like to see that be sliding, as well as providing the loss, so that I don't know where that was. You know, we have this preference of, of resident or non-resident, you know, this and for the next section, I would rather see 2019 against 2020 losses and a percentage of loss, and that's the vetting process as far as severity of business loss, and not first-come, first-served. And so, that's not part of this at all, as far as how much business you've lost, or of that. So, as Ron says, you know, we only have an average, anyway, as far as what those transit room dollars are per, per applicant, and so, you know, we won't really know. But if we're just saying, we'll give five grand out per, you know, I feel like that's not effectively using those, that money. So, that's two of those things.
Okay. Deanna?
I was just, have a question about, when, when the subcommittee met, was there any consideration about whether some of these lodging organizations are able to receive federal or state help? Because there is money out there now, but I don't know enough about it to speak about it, but.
In that meeting, we had, I was suggesting that they be, that they both have a way in which that they're hooked up with SBDC and the Chamber of Commerce. You know, Mr. Mark was questioning the legality of, of requiring them to participate in the Chamber of Commerce and the Small Business Development Center. But I feel like if we're going to give money away, this is a short-term fix, and we need a long-term fix. Dave Price was in our subcommittee meeting, and he also suggested that, you know, there could be a way in which we look at long-term solutions for that, and, you know, I feel like we're, we're giving the money out, we're kind of making the rules as we go, and I don't know, and haven't heard anything as far as a hard no, as far as requiring SBDC or Chamber of Commerce participation for that.
Yeah. That's a little bit different than my question, too, about if they're already receiving.
That was the first step, I'm sorry. We had, we wanted them to talk with. We had, we wanted them to talk with Dave at the SBDC and the Chamber as the, the first level, and then also from there move into the city money.
Well, let, let's also remember that they're all eligible to apply and could get federal funds. Whether they did or not is, you know, a different story.
One of the things that we talked about was, um, well, two things. One was, um, uh, what are the criteria that would go on to actually application to show how you're impacted? Um, what do they need to provide? Uh, we did not really get a lot in the specifics about, um, whether or not they were receiving funds from other organizations. That was a little bit in part because as the conversation went, uh, there was quite a bit of discussion about wanting to get the money out there quickly and not delaying it. And if, if we're following up with checking on when people are receiving things, that would delay the money getting into.
Counselor Mark, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, and, and, um, yeah, some, this is a complicated process. And I mean, I kept going to, how are we going to do this more simply? Um, to something Riley just said, um, as, as Ron pointed out, when you're talking about the lodging facilities, we have on record what their average gross monthly income is. And not, and as you saw on the list that he provided today, especially from the smaller, you know, the locally owned lodging facilities with few, few of any employees. Um, but, uh, when the average monthly was much less than five thousand dollars. I mean, it might be fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. And so when you're speaking about lodging facilities, the language is that they, this grant, this, this voucher would, um, be equivalent to their average, you know, gross room income up to five thousand dollars. So quite a few of them would probably get less than five thousand, which is why, I, I think Ron can help me with this, why the split for lodging was so much less than the split for non-loging businesses, even though we're well aware that the money is all coming from the transient room tax. There's no, no doubt about that, but we're trying to help as many businesses in town as we, as we can. When you get, when we get over to the non-loging side, it becomes a little less clear on how to determine what their loss is. And I have actually some concerns with the language when we get there, we're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not.
Um, but, but the, the idea is that a lot of the lodging businesses will not get five thousand dollars because that's not how much they've lost.
Right, so just, yeah, Ron, you?
Yeah, just to follow up with a little bit of information on that. We have seven hundred and fifty-one, um, uh, businesses that have, they're in the lodging industry that have an occupational tax permit. Of that amount, um, one hundred and twenty-seven, uh, have an average, or have an average of more than five thousand dollars of gross room rent per month. Uh, their average is forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars per month. Six hundred and twenty-four have an average gross room rent of less than five thousand dollars.
You said forty thousand dollars a month each one is making?
Average monthly gross revenue per account with more than five thousand dollars is forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Per account?
Mm-hmm, for those, for those hundred and twenty-seven.
Hundred and twenty-seven homes are making more than forty thousand dollars a year?
Lodging, lodging, motels.
Full, full.
Yep.
Full on, okay.
I did not make a distinction as to the type of lodging, uh, facility. Um, of the account, there's six hundred and twenty-four, uh, accounts with less than five thousand average monthly room rent. And the average monthly gross revenue per account with less than five thousand is one thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. And so when you look at it, if, um, the amount, um, that would be received for the number of businesses that could be assisted in the lodging industry would be somewhere between forty-seven and a hundred and twenty-three, probably around either.
Mitch, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just had a question. Are we talking about cutting checks here or are we buying like gift certificates and stuff like that from these businesses?
Gift certificate.
Gift certificate, they'll be buying goods and services.
Yeah, to be used for a future, uh, draw back as we reopen. Was there any discussion, Ron, on the, uh, I'm, I was surprised at available amount, item two, which is one grant per business owner? What, who cares about how many owners there are, why wouldn't it just be one business?
Um, we, this was one that came from me, that I looked at the possibility that you could have, um, a business, um, someone with multiple businesses or multiple businesses within their family. And so again, the idea was spread it out as far as we can go and help as many businesses we can.
Okay, and, and then the final one here, the business expenses only at, you know, it, I think, um, Counselor Mark talked about wanting to get it out quick and easy, and that sure would bog down. I, I don't know what, what kind of, uh, accounting process, you know, envisioned to, you couldn't be as bad as the Small Business Development, or not Small Business Administration and take forever, or a lender.
We discussed a little bit about, um, uh, what a business expense is and came to the conclusion that everybody in business knows what a business expense is. And we didn't need further definition of that. And as far as how it's used, um, that's going to be something that will be after the fact. Um, uh, so to make sure it was spent the way it was supposed to.
And, hi, yeah, Counselor Mark?
Uh, I, I, you know, uh, Mayor, I, I, you comment on the one grant per business owner. I think you, you might have read that differently than what Ron intended. And I'm realizing there's some possible ambiguity there. I, I think what we're going for is one grant per business, basically. But, and, and if, if, I could imagine that there's a business that's run by a partnership of five, that all five of them apply, and that's obviously not what we're going for here. So we, we need to modify that language a little bit.
Okay, that, Judy?
Yeah, also, um, you talk about business expenses. Um, there's a potential form that says you have to explain how your loss is due to COVID, and there'd be supporting documents, so it might even be a profit and loss statement, so.
But if, if I could, though, you, you've already said it's one of your, it's, it's a lane, Lincoln County Order, which we put out, we stopped short-term rentals, so why show you anything? You've already put me out of business for at least two months now. So why, why are you making me do something to tell you what you already know?
You're asking for a, an explanation of how you've been impacted?
You closed me down!
So, Mr. Mayor, this one is actually a little bit ease of application. We're trying to make the, the two applications as close, as close as possible to each other and ease of how, um, of processing. And, um, um, this one actually, you're right, it's easier to show that we've been closed because of, uh, Order three twenty-three eighty-five. Um, the other one is a little bit more, uh, requires a little bit more information, but it's really kind of ease in processing, so we just have the, uh, the same type of application going out to the, to the businesses.
We could put a line on the application.
I would hope we'd be careful with that because I think that's how cities get a bad name, you know, is, uh, the ease of process. But, you know, to ask a logical question seems a little redundant, but especially when I'm hurting. Counselor Mark?
We, we could put a line on the application with a little checkbox, you know, was your loss due to COVID-nineteen? Check. And the lodging, I mean, the lodging facilities, obviously, you don't need to do that. It's the non-loging ones that this becomes maybe.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, other questions on the lodging side? Would it help, Ron, if we could come to some kind of conclusions on this before you go to non-business or non-loging?
Perhaps, but I think what ultimately what you need to do is receive a recommendation from your subcommittee members.
Okay, all right, let's, let's go ahead and go to then the non-loging.
You should have the same document again, and it's now just gone down into the non-loging businesses. Um, in this case, to be eligible, the business has, uh, must have been affected by the emergency declaration, must have, have a city of Lincoln City Occupational Tax Permit and have been in business in Lincoln City for one year, must be identified in the executive orders, uh, twenty-oh-seven and twenty-twelve, and then I list what it says in there. And then one thing that, uh, that the committee discussed was to add an, uh, additional language that says at the end of, uh, the businesses that, um, are eligible and other Lincoln City retail establishments. Uh, so that went beyond just what the governor has identified. Um, originally it was presented to the subcommittee that there, uh, would require a physical presence in Lincoln City or the business is physically here in Lincoln City. But quite a bit of discussion on that, and out of that came three options, or at least I pulled out three options for you to consider. One is they must have a physical, uh, storefront presence in Lincoln City. Option two was a preference will be given to businesses with a physical storefront presence in Lincoln City. And the third option was eliminate the physical presence requirement. Okay, um, another requirement, uh, they were in agreement on this one is that, uh, the, um, business must have, can have, must have a maximum of six full-time equivalent employees or less. Okay, uh, as with the other one, uh, national and interstate chains, including franchise ownership and management companies are ineligible. And then the Oregon interstate chains are permitted. Um, the next area that we came to was in the available amount. I had originally presented it as, uh, five thousand dollars. If you qualified, then you received five thousand dollars. Uh, there was much discussion on whether or not it should be less and whether or not, how much, um, uh, and, and I guess the best way for me to say it is that it, how much is awarded is determined by the severity of the impact to the business, okay? So, uh, three options came out of this. One, the option is the first one, which is five thousand dollars. The second option is, uh, three thousand five hundred dollars. And then option three is up to five thousand dollars based on the severity of impact. Uh, Counselor Hinton had sent me a note saying, uh, well, during the meeting with the, uh, subcommittee, they talked about a percentage. If you, if you're impacted this percentage, then you're eligible for this amount. If you were impacted this percentage, then you're eligible for this amount. Uh, Counselor Hinton had sent me an email, which I believe I forwarded on to everybody, that gave a little bit more ideas on that, on how that would break down. Um, the, uh, one grant per business owner, I'll put, I'll change that if you'd like, is the same as in the lodging industry and then qualifying businesses expenses only. Now, there's one final thing, there's two final things that, um, that we need to discuss. The first is, um, how to make the judgment on how much should be awarded based upon the severity of the impact. Um, if the council would like to go down that route, then what I would recommend is that you either use the same subcommittee or three different, or three council members to, uh, award these or to make a recommendation to the city council in the same way that you do the, um, uh, the outside agency requests. Uh, that's not something I would leave up to the staff to do. Um, I would, uh, recommend that the city council or that a subcommittee made up of three counselors, not any other individuals, except a staff member to help them process things. Uh, and they make a recommendation just in the same way you do the outside agency requests. And then the final thing was brought up during the meeting, um, that is also, um, the, the subcommittee discussed, and that's whether or not as a condition of, as a condition of receiving the grant, you have to be a member of the, um, Chamber of Commerce and participate in these, uh, SBDC. Now, I had mentioned, um, that I would check with our legal counsel, and unfortunately I did not get around to doing that. So I haven't had a chance to talk with Mr. Appicello about whether or not you can actually make that a requirement of it. Um, um, I would suggest that my own recommend, recommendation would be that you do not do that. Uh, if those organizations, uh, need to build their membership, then they should be responsible to build their own membership. Okay, that, um, so, um, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn that back to you for, um, the, uh, non-loging business. Uh, and what I would suggest is at this point on item one, you can go ahead and get the recommendations, and then we'll go through the other parts of this. Uh, but this, but you can get the recommendations from the, uh, council to go forward or the subcommittee to go forward on this part of it.
Well, why don't we just see if there's any questions from, from that on this, uh, this section, this non, non-loging business section? Can you kill the screen, Ron?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, Diane, question?
Um, yeah, okay, so six full-time, I guess I need some more under, understanding. Are these businesses that are still open, um, having six full-time employees? That would be a very tough one. I know a lot of retail, they have a manager, they have a, um, assistant manager, and everybody else in that store would be part-time. I'm thinking restaurants are, six full-time employees in Lincoln City is very hard.
So that, Diane, that, that would be a maximum. So if you had yourself and one, you, you're eligible.
Sorry, I read it wrong.
Yep, no problem.
A maximum of six. It doesn't matter if that they're part-time. Now, but are these businesses still open? Are they not open or, how, how do you qualify for them?
It would be the number of businesses before they were affected by the, the virus. We recognize that many people have been laid off and businesses have been closed.
Um, Mr. Appicello, since you're an attorney, I think, I, you might have something important for us to listen to. You can take it off, there you go.
Um, so, um, I know we haven't gotten to the subcommittee member recommendations yet, but, um, I'm not, um, enthusiastic about any of this section. Um, and the reason is, is what was portrayed was we're going to purchase, uh, tourism promotion from businesses that have been affected by, uh, state and county and city closures. And as long as Ed, our Explore Lincoln City Department, is complying with the limitations on the use of TRT funds, uh, I'm okay with that. Um, and so it's, it's a difference between giving direction to Ed to spend TRT money, six hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for appropriate tourism promotion, um, activities, getting as creative as he can to include businesses that have been affected by closures, uh, ordered by the state and the county and the city, and that's it. And, um, all the factors, the discriminatory, uh, uh, criterion that you've come up with, whether or not it's a national chain or a state chain or, um, they don't, they don't matter because the direction to Ed is comply with the TRT law and, um, make sure you include businesses that have been affected by closures. That's, that's the criterion under which he would operate. He would spend money in accordance with that direction. Um, when you switch to what's being discussed, I heard discussion of if you qualify, you will. if you qualify, you will receive five thousand dollars. Uh, if you're eligible and your application demonstrates this, you will receive. That sounds more like an entitlement. And then we have to justify why some people are getting the money and other people aren't getting the money. And I think that's a road you shouldn't be going down. Just proceed, they give direction to Ed to spend TRT monies appropriately and back out and stay out. That's my input and that's because I do not want to defend all these.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chandler?
Um, so perhaps we're using the words wrong, but this has always been a purchase of goods and services for lodging and non lodging industry. So this is, uh, perhaps using the words grant is the wrong word and I need to change that. But it is a purchase of goods and services by Ed. Now, um, Richard's the guy that will have to defend, defend things if we're challenged. So what he says is really important. However, um, you've got to give something to the staff to say how to spend four hundred thousand dollars. Um, um.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you at six hundred thirty-five thousand. Uh, you know, I like Ed, but not that much. You know, I want to give him some guidance. So I, I guess that's the definition is how do we give guidance in a constructive manner that Apicello can, uh, defend if, if questioned. Councilor Hinton?
I was just gonna use that word. How about if this is, these are guidelines and allow Ed some leeway in how he, and how he spends those funds, but keep within the council's wishes or intentions.
So one of the important parts about that, I think that's great, but I think one of the important parts about it is that if it is just five thousand dollars that is awarded or thirty-five hundred or one thousand or whatever number you come up with, that's easy for us to work with. If there's more discretion based on the severity of the impact, um, then I really think that that needs to become a decision by the city council through a subcommittee and not just left up to the staff.
Uh, Councilor Hoagland?
Oh, um, yeah, I, I wasn't trying to say, suggest that the severity of business impact reduced the amount of money that you received, right? It was based on, or based of, it wouldn't reduce the amount of money that the Explore Lincoln City would buy goods and services from you. It was just to try to vet who gets what more than the other. Um, but if, if now, uh, we're looking at as far as defensible, then what if you just take every business in town that has been affected and then just divide it to the four hundred thousand? And then everybody gets the same amount. I mean, if we're, if now it's, our city attorney doesn't want to defend what we're doing and how we're doing it and what is the way in which we'll get money and then that's, well, that's all we have. Um, you know, it's, and it wasn't about populating the SBDCs or the Chamber of Commerce's membership. The viewpoint was a way in which to help businesses have long-term goal, long-term help in their business needs. It wasn't about pumping up this chamber. Um, so that was it because we're also giving them, we're also spending TRT money on goods and services to help in this time. Here's another way in which we could help. And, uh, you know, I don't know the, the fees associated with those organizations, but I understand what they are for the community and how they are doing it. And, you know, again, to try to, to, to state that the, the hiring, um, the employment date may be February of two thousand twenty or March first would be a universal stated, what were your employees at March first? What were your employees at February first? Because if they're at seven and then they laid off, uh, you know, March fifteenth and now we're at six and now they get it. So, you know, where is the cutoff point as far as employment? So that, that's not clear either.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Coos, are you still there wanting the question? Okay, you're up. You can unmute.
I'm gonna have a better understanding. It's about services and goods. So what we're doing is creating marketing packages that we will use at a different time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So those are, how do you determine or what do you say? If I'm a marketing person, I'm gonna say, okay, this weekend it's gonna be all about, okay, dogs. That's I like dogs. So I find a dog-friendly hotel, I find dog, um, restaurants and I find, um, doggy spas or whatever. And I put that together. How do you determine? I mean, I don't understand how you can take and go, okay, so this restaurant, this restaurant, this restaurant. I spend this much, this much, this much. I, I guess that's where I'm confused. I, how do you do, oh, one business gets five thousand dollars in gift certificates? I, I'm very confused on how this works.
Okay. Let's, uh, Ed, can you jump in and just give a overview of how you would, you know, market or buy your marketing material?
Yeah, um, my assumption was that, uh, we would end up with a, uh, a lot of stuff from a lot of different businesses. Uh, we would have X number of hotel rooms. And, uh, you know, what, what Diane just described, I saw that as us doing that on the backend rather than the frontend. I mean, we're gonna have a bunch of things that we can mix and match and assemble and, uh, turn into things where we can do giveaways. Um, part of it, and then Bron can go into this in more detail if, if he wants to later. But, you know, we're, we're looking for that multiplier effect. We're looking to get people comfortable coming back to Lincoln City. Uh, if you look at the Dean Runyon report that, uh, Travel Oregon does for the, the central coast, the average visiting party here will drop seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars before they go back home. Um, I don't want to ever give away that much money in a package. I, I want to make sure that they come in, enjoy the couple of things we use to entice them into town, but still spend a fair amount of, amount of money while they were here. Um, the, the other thing as we get into this, I, there's, there's been a, a fear expressed to me by a couple of different businesses in town, like, oh my God, we're just gonna get on our feet. And all of a sudden, all these freebies are gonna come in and I'm gonna be giving away my product and it's gonna be coming at the wrong time and all that. We're gonna have a lot of stuff. We're gonna have six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of things. If I gave away vacation packages worth, I don't know, fifteen hundred bucks, um, a week, um, I'm still giving stuff away seven years from now. So this is gonna be metered out over a long time and we're gonna get very, very creative is how we put things together. Um, so do I want to go into this saying, okay, I need to build a dog-friendly package and I need this, this, that and the other? To be honest with you, absolutely not. I don't have the time for that. There's too many businesses, too many considerations, too much of everything. Um, I think that the subcommittee's recommendation should put us, uh, should, should guide us toward where the money should be spent and after it's been spent and after we collect goods and services, it's my department's responsibility to be creative and also be responsible with what we have, not flood the town with, uh, gift certificates. And also have some fun with it and do it in a manner where it's gonna get some publicity. It's gonna get people to chuckle and laugh. It's gonna demonstrate our brand promise that we're the beach town that's unique. We're the one with surprises around every corner. We're the ones that, uh, uh, that are, that are big enough to go out and explore. Um, all those are gonna happen because of these things that we're putting together. Um, but, but again, let me assemble that on the backend, not on the frontend.
Yeah. Does that make sense, Diane?
Yes and no. In a sense, I understand you get a bunch of stuff, you put it together and go. But how do you determine which businesses you're spending five thousand dollars in versus one thousand versus a fifty dollars? I mean, how, how, we have a lot of businesses in town. How do you determine who's getting that? Um, by not having them qualify or become where Richard can't defend it or, uh, that's where I'm looking.
Okay, I, I might have, uh, a five thousand dollar credit at, say, uh, in Oklahoma. And, um, I'll probably go to them and say, hey, I want to give a weekend package. You know, I want to use some of the credit, so I'm gonna use up five hundred and sixty dollars right now. And I probably won't go back and tap into that five thousand bucks until a couple of months from now. I'll probably talk to each business and say, is it a comfortable time for me to be doing this? Um, I, I don't want to pull in a five thousand dollar credit all at once. I, I, that would be disastrous. But what I want to do is to over time meter it out in a responsible manner, not cause any damage, but use it in a way that brings people into, into town that's gonna benefit everyone else.
So, and I, I think Diane's question maybe was getting to the point though of, you know, a little bit, who do you, who do you give a thousand dollar check to or, or buy a thousand dollars worth of credit to versus five thousand? And somebody's always gonna be hurt feelings or, or whatever.
Yeah, I, I think that's why we're, we're leaning toward the subcommittee to, uh, you know, do whatever means testing they want to do, uh, look at the criteria they laid, laid out in the recommendation. And, um, you know, I'll work with what we get.
Yep, I know you will. And we'll spend what we take from you too, so, you know, we'll. Um, the, let's see, I've got a, Rick Mark?
Uh, yeah, as far as, who gets what? That, that was really the, um, part of the, the crux where we really had an issue. And my preference, even though it might be a little more difficult in the application, was to ask the business to tell us what their gross average income is. And if it's less than five, five thousand dollars, that would be the cap for their, for their voucher. I'm gonna use the term voucher, I think that's what we want. I, I, we started off with, uh, five thousand dollars per business, thinking that would get us eighty businesses. And the thought was first come, first served, which I really appreciate the simplicity of first come, first served. And maybe that's the way to go. My concern was that we were creating a situation where there could, just like the lodging businesses, there might be businesses that lose fifteen hundred dollars and then they're getting a five thousand dollar voucher. And I don't know that that's what we want to be doing. Um, you know, I had another thought in there, I lost it. Um, I, I also had a concern. Thank you, Councilor Hinton, for raising your hand because that reminded me what I, other concern was. This notion of the severity of impact being based on percentage didn't really make a whole lot of sense to me either because you, again, you could have a business that loses a thousand dollars and they lost everything. That's, that's a hundred percent. And another business that loses, you know, four thousand dollars and that's twenty percent. Do we want to give, are we giving five thousand dollars to the business that lost a thousand? But not, I mean, it, it, we're, we're making it really complicated. And if, I think it'd be complicated enough just to say, what's your average loss? What's your P and L say, your average loss is? And, um, based on that, and, and either, either go down the list, these businesses lost the most. And, you know, with a five thousand dollar cap, if eighty businesses on a first come, first served basis qualify, then the money's gone. Um, but if it goes a little farther because the business lost less, then the money goes a little farther. That, that's kind of how I was.
Riley, you still got your hand up?
Yes. Thank you. So it isn't about giving five thousand dollars to the business that lost a thousand dollars. That's not what it is. We're trying to vet in a way in which people can be helped across the board. I don't know how we can legally, if we can't legally defend grants to the businesses, so what, number one, what do you, I, I don't know what this looks like. In your office, Ed, are you gonna have a safe with a hundred thousand gift certificates? I don't understand how we can't say, here's the money to the business. You owe us X amount of dollars in a credit process. And through the city's own tracking system and its own, it says the COVID, the COVID certificate or whatever it is, that they, the city administers the gift certificate. It is one official document from the city. I don't understand how you're gonna have a hundred and fifty businesses in lodging facilities and have all the variety of those big cards on hand and try to shuffle them in an envelope and say, here you go, you won your prize and here it is. I don't know how that looks. But if the city is maintaining this whole kind of bank of credit that they have with all these various department or businesses, then we can go down and it's, that's the money. And that we know that there is four hundred dollars for this particular business that's gonna be, you know, forty, ten dollar gift cards. I don't, you know, that's, there's a, there's a big thing here as far as what we're gonna say okay or not okay with. And how, how is it that Ed's decision is, couldn't be challenged about who's gonna, who's gonna, you know, where's he gonna go and buy and packages and all that other thing? You know, it's very kind of tricky that way. And, you know, and we're still not looking at a way in which to require them to have long-term help. You know, we're, you know, so, so fine, throw out the chamber because it costs money and, and, and have the requirement to be a part of business community here in Lincoln City. You're, you're part of the city and you're getting this money from the city and the TRT. And we want to protect you and help you that whole long way. So it's, it's, it, there's a lot of iffy things that are coming out of this.
Yeah, well, there, there's, um, a lot of the tactics that we haven't worked all the way out, uh, already. The one thing I really don't want to have is a giant vault somewhere that's stacked toward a ceiling with gift cards. And that's, trust me, that's not where we want to go with this. Um, talking to Liz and, uh, some of the folks in my department, I think our preference, preference is gonna be Riley, exactly what you just described, where, um, we in essence have a credit of five thousand dollars at, uh, you know, Hotel X. And, uh, we have the ability to go in there and tap it until we finally pay it down, um, in a responsible manner. So, uh, yeah, if you're picturing, uh, this giant vault where we can go swimming in gift cards, that's not gonna happen.
Cause then you're at risk for theft and all that abuse and whatever, you know what I mean?
Uh, Diane, did you want to weigh in?
Well, I was just, um, I really appreciate what Riley was just talking about because it, it helps. I think this whole discussion has been very helpful because quite frankly, my mind before a few minutes ago was on a grant process. And I appreciate the city attorney kind of steering us away from that because that's not what this is. And so if this isn't what that is, and if it is, um, to just get some money in the hands of the businesses that we can use the, um, credit later, then that seems like it should be a much more simple process, although I don't know what that is. But, um, and I, I have a kind of a lump in my stomach about first come, first served because that sounds like a free-for-all and it doesn't sound even-handed. But I don't know what the process is, so, um, I'm a little bit right now.
So I, I too, uh, you know, I kind of marvel have, since my background is banking and lending. Let me remind you what we've just gone through with unemployment, um, in the state of Oregon and being overrun with applicants. Um, and the, uh, the banks trying to administer billions of dollars when they've only done millions before. Um, you, you're asking for the same, I, I hear you, setting criteria that's gonna get, you know, staff, you know, boggled down or you as counselors boggled down. You know, I, nobody's gonna get rich with a thousand dollar check, quite frankly. And, you know, I, I, I appreciate all this effort that's gone through because you've tried to. But, you know, if you just simply pulled a Bernie Sanders and sent a thousand dollar check to every, or let Ed, um, you know, occupancy, um, in the city, um, then you don't get into any squabbles, you know, uh, and, and it, and it's easy. Um, you, you've got a record of who's paid a, an occupancy, uh, tax. They're your businesses. You know, sure, screen out the ones that are, you know, not affected, the contractors and that kind of stuff. And, and get it down. But worrying about and asking somebody for, you know, when they make forty thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars or five thousand dollars to show me your you know, when they make $40,000 or $15,000 or $5,000 to show me your financial statements when I'm hurting for the last two months, um, is a little bit over the top because you're not going to give me enough to make me well. So, uh, quite frankly, I, I think you ought to simple this thing down. Um, and don't worry about winners and losers because they're all losers because they've been suffering. You know, all you're doing is just giving them a, a little bit of a lifeline and you ought to make it as simple as you can for staff and for Ed, you know, uh, I, I can't imagine, look at the trouble we go through with the nonprofit, you know, uh, grant for 50,000 and the criteria and, and, you know, now to add 635,000. Um, I, I think you just got to round it to a zero and, you know, send them a check and Ed will be calling them for credit or whatever. All right, that raised hearts. Uh, okay, Diane?
No, I have to agree with you because I, when, Ed, you're talking, you're talking about lodging all the time. And we already discussed lodging at 235,000, but you're talking 400,000 for small businesses. I, I would think that would be a nightmare, a nightmare on credit to all these different places versus here, I'm sending you a check, but I'm going to catch up with you later in life. Um, anyways, yeah, it's, um, Mayor kind of simplified it. I have to agree with that.
Ron?
Yeah, um, there is another way to simplify this. Um, and also to be able to spread, um, it out a little bit more. If you try to do every business in town, you're going to give out 100, you're going to give out 2,604 checks at $153 each. Um, so one of the things when we put this together that we looked at is who should we help? It's the people that the government has done something to. And that's why we used, uh, the, the, that's why in the lodging industry, we use the order by the county. And that's why we use the definition in the two, um, uh, executive orders by the governor. Because those are the ones that were specifically affected by a government action.
Yep. And I, I would say that would be your list, you know, to work off. And that might pump it up, you know, to $1,000, you know, it get a, you know, because you're, you're not going to make somebody whole by any means. Um, and I, I applaud the effort, but, uh, Judy?
Um, I was going to say, um, I would, our, our goal was to get money into people's hands quickly. And I agree with you, Mayor. But, um, if we gave like $3,500 and we had just a list of requirement and make it simple and just send it to them. And then have a deadline, a time deadline by May, blah, blah, blah. And then the committee will choose who will get the money.
Yep, thinking, yep. Uh, Mr. Mark?
Uh, yeah, simplicity is the goal and the, you know, the concern, Dave Price used the term of, uh, trying to spread the peanut butter too thin. And, um, I mean, $635,000, it, it's a nice chunk of money to put back in the city economy. It's going to get distributed somehow. But we're trying to figure out what's the reasonable way to do that. If, 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 I, I like the idea of a, an equal amount to an X number of businesses. Um, I, you know, if $1,000, I, I think the feeling was that $1,000 was just too little. And, uh, you know, Judy had the idea of 3,500, that, that would make sense. But again, you're, you're still going to have too many businesses for the amount of money that we have. And then we're still left with the question of how do we decide who gets it and who doesn't? And I don't like the idea of first come, first served. I, I, I agree. That's, 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 um, I, again, you could have, uh, someone with a, a lesser loss jumping in line ahead of someone with a, with a bigger loss. Um, so I'm not sure what the answer is.
Um, Mr. Holglen, you're, you're next. Then you, Diane, or Deanna?
Thanks. So the, that, I understand that this is a lot for, you know, this isn't about winners and losers. And, and that's not what we're doing here. And, and it's not about trying to facilitate, uh, somebody making more money than they've lost. By having a requirement of saying, hey, how much, what percentage of loss do you have? In a dropdown menu in the application process and a total dollar amount after that, then you have the system evaluated for you already. You know, we're trying to use the technology that exists in a way in which it's not going to be Ron Chandler deciding. It's not going to be Ed Bryst that trying, this is a small town. People are already telling me, oh, wait a second. We were contacted a month ago about I so-and-so who was going to buy gift certificates and then nothing. So that's a multiple different businesses have come to tell me that, okay, well, it was something, now it's not, we don't know, I don't know. Nobody knows. You know, these businesses are unsure. We have the opportunity to say, hey, here's the process without somebody's input about here's a way in which we can help you this much, whether that's $3,500 at 100% loss or whatever it is. But that, that's the maximum that it can be. And we have to decide how you're going to distribute that money. It is, I feel like we get these feelings and things like that, and it's not what we're trying, not what we're trying to do. Make it simple for everybody. There's some geese coming around. But, um, you know, make it, just make it easy.
Yep, we hear you. Deanna?
Okay, I was just going to remind us that we were first given an example of this type of city providing funding towards businesses from Beaverton. And their limit was $2,500. And, um, it cost them more in Beaverton to run a store of any variety than it does here. But I just want to throw that out. And I haven't looked into their process, but it probably wasn't TRT money is my guess. So they probably had more of a competitive type of process. So I wouldn't, I still don't like that part of this.
So I guess I, I missed that. What, what you don't like or?
I just don't like the competitiveness of, um, how, how this ours could go. I, um, I'd rather have it very simple and.
Yeah, just a flat dollar amount to some, just.
Yes, or as if we tier the businesses, knowing that some businesses probably have more expenses related to how they perform their business than others. I mean, I don't know if we want to do that, but.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we've actually gotten nowhere. Um, so that should be good. So make it run, Ron. Uh, no, Judy, what, what do you got?
Oh, I have, I have Seaside's and I think they use tourism relief program. And you're probably familiar with that, Ed, right? So that would be TRT money, tourism relief program, uh, temporary loss of revenue associated with COVID, uh, small business, not blah, blah, blah. But anyway, it's simple. Um, business name, license, mortgage payment, average number of employees, charges from, you know, March on, license, you know, plan for the funding through the, and that's about it. Demonstrate steps outside of the grant to, um, make an impact. That's it. That's all we got.
And so what happened? I fill out that app and?
Yeah.
A check, a check for how much comes?
For, uh, $4,000. Depending on the quality of applications received by the deadline, you may not have enough funds to grant awards to each applicant nor fully fund each request. It's important to ensure from the onset that you are eligible and you make a demonstrated, a compelling case for funding. And you have all the information required before beginning the online application.
So it's a first come, first served. Fill the bond. Yep. Yeah, Ron?
The hard part in what Seaside is doing, and it's the hard part that I hear here. If you don't have to have, if you don't have a set amount that's available that everybody gets until the money's run out, somebody has to make a judgment as to who gets, who gets more and who gets less.
Yep.
Uh, I can tell you that from a staff point, that is not something you should give to the staff to do. Um, yeah, that should go to a subcommittee of the city council.
Okay. Deanna?
I just have a question of Counselor Casper.
Yes.
So, um, for Seaside, you, I think you mentioned $4,000. Was that a set amount? Because that might answer, um, your question, Ron. And only that they have to prove that they have a business and all that.
Up to $4,000.
Oh, up to, I see.
Up to, they'll be considered for up to $4,000.
So if we did something similar and we said, I don't know, $2,000 or $2,500 and just instead of different amounts, I mean, I'm trying to think of a simple, straightforward way to do this. But then, but then let me ask you this question. Could Ed buy and use $2,500 worth of business? I don't know what, a massage? I mean, attached to it? I mean, how do you?
Over six or seven years, probably. Where this is going to be in place for a long, long time. And this is a way to get some money into town to where it's.
And I, I think, you know, even Seaside is, is, uh, duty is put forth, there has to be a judgment made, and that's Ron's point. Um, you know, you're making judgment on, you know, somebody else's information is going to be tough without a standard. Um, and I, I think personally it's just simpler, just, you know, you, you plug a number, $1,000, and out it comes. The, the criteria, you narrow down your businesses to Ron's point of those that by order or by resolution have been affected. And, you know, have at it. I, I would too. I, I'm still back at, you know, I'm, I'm thinking out loud, but the franchises, the, uh, national companies, you know, i- if I'd been, you know, um, you know, Starbucks to pick on them, uh, Safeway, um, then they probably wouldn't qualify. But, uh, thinking of franchise companies that have supported nonprofits and fundraisers in this city and that we go to every month. And their certificates show up at these auctions and stuff. You know, I, I personally, I think it gets a slap in the face by saying, well, now, now we, we don't want you to play. Um, so I, I would narrow down your, your list and just send a flat check. Or however you disperse it. You're, you're just making a lot of work for yourself. Judy?
Well, you could make it, I mean, if you want to include like Starbucks or whatever. I think that would be a decision of the committee, just like it is for the nonprofits. I mean, the idea is to inject money into the economy. Some will get money, just like the nonprofit grants, some won't. And our goal is to get some money into the community to the best of our ability. We're only human. And I, I agree with you. Um, just make it as simple as possible.
Diane?
Um, I'm reading Seaside's right now and it doesn't sound like it's like credit for, it's a grant. They're giving you money, they're giving you a grant. It's not carried over with credit.
Well, yeah, but that really doesn't matter whether it's cash or credit. It's how much? Because all we're saying is Ed's idea originally was to make this a double-edged sword with some cash now in their pockets and, and him a tool later when we reopen to invite people to the city. So, um, I, I like his idea because, you know, it's much to everybody's point. We, we need to let people know we're open, um, when we're open. So, anyway, where do we go from here? Ron?
So, uh, I think I can get you through this if I just ask a few questions and you tell me what you would like to do with them. So let's go right back to the first question. Are you okay with the 235, 400, 235,000, 400,000 split?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay. The next question, and this would affect both the lodging and non-loging businesses. Um, should national chains, uh, be accepted?
So, are, you know, uh, let's pick on our favorite Subway sandwiches. Um, it's a franchise, but it's a national chain. So as I'm reading, they're, they're not eligible.
That would be.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, I don't know, you know, now who the franchise owners are. Um, but, you know, they certainly, you know, yesterday or day before it was, you know, Mayor Williams. Um, and he certainly puts in, you know, a payroll and, you know, funds. So I, I, that's where I'm kind of troubled with, you know, uh, just because it's a national chain doesn't mean that it's not local.
I agree. I agree. Um.
Oh, let's, and if we could go to the outlet mall, aren't all those stores national chains? And, uh, so they wouldn't be eligible at all? And is that what you want? There's, boy, those stores have kicked in a lot of money to fundraisers and stuff in this community.
But those would take also dollars from our local grassroots people here, the chain stores, if you were to go to the mall.
But, but, but they're hiring our workforce, right? 350 employees in that, you know, group or thereabouts.
How do we know that money's going to go to the employees?
Well, uh, I, it's a thousand dollars. You know, I.
I don't think those are the ones at this point that are hurting though. But if you look at Scout, Salt, um, and as we all know, Harry and David's not opening again, so don't buy gift certificates from them. Um, you know, the locals that are here, but the Nikes aren't worried about it.
Yep.
We say intrastate are okay.
Well, that's the question. If you eliminate national interstate chains and franchises, then every business is, or, yeah, then the businesses that qualify, if they're a national chain, they're okay.
Yeah, I'd say that.
I would.
I, I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, I, um, I'm okay with including the national chains because there are, the franchises are locally owned. It was really just a tool to try to narrow
Right.
the list. How, how much of a burden is it on the applicant to say what their loss was? And, um, which would give us a number that we could use to rank you know, the impact of this loss with a cap of five? Well, I don't think the cap's going to be 5,000. If we're expanding the list, we're trying to make this simple, then, um, you know, I mean, if we cap it at 1,000, that's 400 businesses. Is, is, uh, Mayor, is that kind of what you're thinking? You'd like to see?
Well, I, I just threw out the number. I, I think.
Well, yeah.
But, but Ron, I think the first step would be for Ron and staff to identify from our, you know, occupancy tax permits, the businesses that are eligible.
Yeah.
You know, and then divide the pool, you know, I mean, it could be that simple. Just divide the pool up, um, and see what it comes out to. Um, and I, you know, because I, to me, it's more, you know, it, it, it's being, it's going to be embarrassing when, you know, a, a, a cost of a business, you know, and, and you're just giving them, you know, pick a numbers, something so small. Um, you know, but it's the, more the spirit. And I think that's what Riley's been getting at. The idea was just the spirit to help you out, you know, quickly. And, you know, already, you know, we're looking at the end of April and this has been going on since, you know, March 13th. Um, so, you know, the, the more hoops we put in, the further it gets before money actually gets into a hand. And it's, it's not going to cure anybody. It's, it's more of a, a token, you know, we're with you.
Um, uh, so one thing that, um, I'm going to eliminate the word grant. Um, uh, so one thing that, um, I'm going to eliminate the word grant, and I'll use the purchase of vouchers or the purchase of goods and services so that, uh, uh, we don't mix that up. So the next thing that, question that I have is, um, the eligibility is based upon, uh, Lincoln County Order Number Three, Twenty-three eighty-five, and, um, Executive Orders Twenty-oh-seven and Twenty-oh, and Twenty-twelve. Now, Twenty-oh-seven is all of your restaurants. Restaurants, bars, taverns, pubs, wine bars, cafes, food courts, coffee shops, clubs, or other establishments that offer food or drink. And then Twenty-twelve is a pretty long list. It's amusement parks, aquariums, arcades, art galleries, barber shops, hair salons, bowling alleys, cosmetic stores, dance studios, esthetician practices, fraternal organization facilities, furniture stores, gyms, fitness studios, including climbing gyms, uh, hookah bars, indoor and outdoor malls, jewelry shops, boutiques, medical spas, facial spas, day spas, non-medical message therapy, massage therapy services, museums, nails and tanning salons, non-tribal card rooms, skating rinks, senior activity centers, ski resorts, social and private clubs, tattoo and piercing parlors, tennis clubs, theaters, yoga studies, and youth clubs. Those are the list of the businesses that have affected, been affected by a government action.
What about, we have three rock and gem shops. Where would they go?
That's why we wanted the language and other retail, because I was, I was concerned that antique shops and gift shops weren't covered by any of the, this kind of silly list.
Riley?
All right, so, you know, this brings up a point of, of vetting, and the difference between a business that has been allowed to remain open and a business that was forced to shut down. If we're going to do any kind of vetting, it should be to the businesses that were absolutely not allowed to be open during this time. And then to the businesses that were avail, had the opportunity to stay open through whatever means necessary. I understand having a business is a risk, and unfortunately, this is what happened. But when you are told you cannot open, that's very different of open under a limited set of circumstances. If you have a drive-up window, da-da-da-da-da, you know, some businesses haven't closed. I guarantee you there's businesses that haven't lost any money at all this entire time. So, I mean, if we're going to say who gets what, it should be the businesses that have not been able to open, period.
Okay. So the, uh, the other option that you had in there was the language and other Lincoln City retail establishments.
I think Ri- Riley would make the point, as he just did, that stay with your list. And, you know, that by order or resolution or whatever have, were forced to close. And, and divide that up, you know.
First, the ones that have had to stay closed. There's a big difference here as far as businesses that, I mean, come on, we, we, we know what we're talking about here.
Yep, yep. So how, how do people feel about that? Just go with the named type of businesses that are in the executive order or the city, county? Yeah, I see two thumbs up.
Does that include other retail businesses too?
Only if they're named. Named in the order.
I don't think that's fair, because we have some unique businesses.
Well, so that means they could have stayed open.
Hey, we're trying to help the ones that have not been able to open at all. And we can reach out. We can, I mean, we ha- we haven't had an open forum for businesses to contact us either about, hey, here, let us know, you know, that's the other part of this too, is like, we're just, we, the seven of us, and the subcommittee of those nine have just kind of like, well, this is what we think. Without any direct information from the businesses, you know.
Yeah, but I.
On, on a whole.
Yeah, Riley, the, the ideas are good if you were going to make a semester course out of this, you know, uh. Let's keep it short and sweet, you know, uh, Counselor Martin?
Well, yeah, I mean, restaurants are on the emergency declaration list, but a lot of restaurants stayed open serving takeout. We're, we're, are we not going to, and I'm sure they lost a ton of business. Do, are they off the list?
Order Two-thousand and, Twenty-oh-seven does not make a distinction on whether or not they were takeout or not. They were specifically permitted to do takeout, but it just simply lists them as having to close except for takeout.
So they would be on the list?
But not by Riley's standard?
Yeah. No, it's not about losing money. It's about businesses that were forced to stay closed during this time.
That's what I'm saying, the restaurants.
Open with modification.
The, the restaurants were, or they're on the list to close.
So restaurants are included, okay.
Yeah.
Restaurants have been open, so nail salons and hair salons have been closed. There's a difference.
Not all restaurants were open.
The restaurants are open.
Not all of them.
To-go. They, if they ordered to-go. Right. Right. You can stay open with to-go.
Okay.
That's their choice to not do it.
Okay, that's, um, a- again, the simple one is you, as we said, stated, if it's on the list, named by an executive order or commission, or city-county resolution. If it's on that list, then it's a qualified business that would qualify for whatever we do.
There's a difference between businesses that were forced to close and businesses that could remain open with to-go containers. There's a difference.
We're saying, aren't we saying the same thing? What is different between what I'm saying and you're saying? I'm, you, it's on the list.
I don't know. I don't know what the difference is.
Okay, so we're, we're there. We're in agreement. If it's off the list, right?
Okay, well, I, I guess. I mean, it's, if you're saying we're saying the same thing, then okay.
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, Ron, keep us moving.
Okay. Um, so, on the list. Um, the next thing is, do you want to require a physical presence in the city? I think that becomes a mute point when you say they're on the list.
Any disagreement? Okay.
Okay. And, and then you've already decided on the question of the franchise, so we don't need to go there. Uh, the next question that I have that pertains to both groups is, um, as to the amount. Um, we had talked about just simply having a dollar amount. Do you want that dollar, you, um, you, you've got a couple of choices if you want a dollar amount. One thing that I've heard is take however many are eligible and divide, and divide four hundred thousand by it. The other one is to have an amount and get it as far as spread as you can. If you go one thousand dollars, it's, um, it's four hundred businesses that'd be helped. Two hundred, uh, dollar, or two thousand dollars would be, um, two, two hundred businesses that would be helped and so forth. Um, if you use the Beaverton model, it's, uh, twenty-five hundred, and that's, um, a hundred and sixty that would be helped. So, um, easiest way for us to administer it is just pick a number. And then it goes as far as it goes.
Well, the, you have the number now with the dollar amount, right? I mean, the pot, the pots.
We have a total, yeah, four hundred thousand.
So, so then, I, I guess one, one of the options is divide that pot by the number of qualified, uh, businesses.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I don't know at this point is just how many, or how many would fall into that category.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't know how small the amount would be.
I, I counted, um, businesses, six employees or less the other night, and then the ones that qualified that had the self-employed, and I got a hundred and twelve. But that's doing it three times. And I'm not scientific.
So a hundred and twelve divided by, you know, four, four, four hundred thousand? Quick math?
Well, that's not including the lodging, that's just the business.
No, no, but the pot for that is only four hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be about thirty-five hundred dollars.
Good.
Um, now, the other, so, uh, Counselor Casper brings up a good point. I didn't hear any objections to saying six full-time equivalent employees or less.
Correct.
Okay, so that one's okay then.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is, um, as far as the available amount, first thing that you want me to do is just look to four hundred thousand dollars divided by who's eligible.
Right.
Preference of the businesses that were forced to close.
Right.
They have to be on the list.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Judy, you still got your hand up, your?
Oh, no, no.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Apicello, that's defensible?
If talking about the purchase of goods and services for tourism promotion purposes consistent with the state law and our charter, um, yeah. That's, if it's not, if you're not doing that, if you're just giving away money, then you're going to be personally liable under two ninety-four one hundred.
Yep, no, that, it'd be for the purpose.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I have then on this one is that, uh, is the document as I presented with these changes. Four hundred thousand, two thirty-five, okay? Uh, franchises are, and national chains are okay. The business has to be named in, in Executive Orders Twenty-oh-seven, Twenty-twelve, and County Order Three, Twenty-three eighty-five. Um, the physical presence is eliminated, and the amount will be four hundred thousand dollars divided by how many do the qualifying businesses.
Okay?
Okay. That will use up that six hundred and thirty-five thousand. If, if, if you want to take action on that, then we can move to the next ones.
Okay, let me, Riley's got a question.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if we should be making any kind of decision without it being public input. I think, you know, we're, we've been talked about, I, I hear, don't sigh already. Look, but I mean, these are, this is drastically different from what we were talking about before. And with different sets of circumstances and different things. And from the subcommittee to the work session till now is very different. And I understa- and me, all of us, don't have a full, you know, thing in front of us either as far as what this is and who it's going to accomplish and what it's going to do and, and to what business is. I don't feel like we should be making any kind of decisions, at least tonight, without that all being like presented in such a fashion. I think we're, I think we're going to piss off a lot of people.
But Riley, I would, uh, one, welcome to what you're elected to do. And two, you know, why we picked the subcommittee of three counselors. So, you've been in this rehash, and this is probably, this is one of the problems of a subcommittee that has to then come forward, because you guys weren't all in agreement. So you should have expected that trying to bring to four other people, you know, something you couldn't hash out firmly, you know, this was going to happen. So, it, you know, it's great to have input, and you brought people into your subcommittee to give you some input. You've shared that with us and on, we've taken it into consideration. But this bloody thing could go on to July if we wanted it. You know, think of Styrofoam and, and plastic bags. You know, we could talk forever.
And, and that's okay, but, but what's, but that's, but, but the thing is, we are trying to help the businesses, and we're making decisions without the businesses involved. And now we're changing things to be very different from what we talked about, and not having them an opportunity to come comment. And I feel like we should at least be able to receive those comments before we make a final decision.
So Riley, you're saying cash in there till any amount wouldn't be helpful?
I don't know if that's what they want. It's not about simply money. It's not about, it's like listening to, there is more to it than just give me a thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, Judy?
I, I think we should ask amongst ourselves to take consensus if that's important. Uh, I think that.
What is?
What Riley is suggesting to do to get all this input. We do nonprofit grants without getting a bunch of input. We live in this community, we have input. Um, I think if we reach a consensus about how to proceed, it might give us more of a direction rather than hassling over what to do. Let's do something.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah, I, uh, and so here's my input. I, I don't agree with Riley that what we've come up with is significantly different than what we discussed in the subcommittee. I think it's just kind of nuanced, and I'm not necessarily in agreement with everything, but we need to move ahead. And, uh, if we wait for public hearing, uh, we're just delaying the process. And, uh, let's, let's go ahead and, and, and agree to this and let people know that there's money from the TRT coming back into the community, and I think we should move ahead.
Diane?
I have a question as far as legality of goods and services. And yet, the VCB or Explore Lincoln City does grants to businesses and to nonprofits that do events or other things, like, um, the Bijou got, um, or the community center, the swimming team got this thing. So it was a, uh, what is it called? They're, they're records, they, the clock. Okay, so how is that different using tourism dollars, um, for a grant for most of all of our businesses, our tourism-based businesses? So I'm just, I'm just want a little bit clarification there.
Well, could we maybe, um, because that won't matter. Doesn't, that, your definition or what you need is kind of after the fact. So, and, and it's a good question, but could you take that up with Ed and Rick or, uh, Apicello? Because it, it really doesn't have anything to do with getting this process resolved for tonight?
Well, in a way it does, because you're going to send people checks, but are they going to accept checks and say, oh, but it's only for goods and services that I'm going to give to the VCB at a later date?
So I think Mr. Apicello has told us, as long as it's, you know, meets the criteria of whatever, you know, you can spend TRT money on.
It's tourism promotion. And, yeah, what we're, what we're trying to do is contract for tourism promotion. Ed's got a public contracting limit of ten thousand dollars delegated, uh, to his authority. He can, each individual purchase or contract, he can go up to ten thousand dollars. It sounds like you're going to make, make him lower that for this, uh, program. But if it's tourism promotion, we can defend it.
All of the grants? With the, the grant program, we don't just cut checks. I mean, anybody that's been through the application process of that, you have to be able to prove that what you're doing is going to bring people into town and, uh, have a return on investment that's greater than the grant. It's, it's not a blank check. I mean, when we gave, uh, money to the, the bowling alley, the rationale was if they refinish the lanes, they became eligible for league play. League play comes in on the offseason, and lo and behold, they got enough league play through there the first year to more than pay for the grant. So, that's a lot different than just saying, here's a check.
All right, Ron?
Nope, he answered it.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay, part two. This is another six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
So where did we leave that?
Oh, you needed it, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you want to vote on part one, or wait till the whole thing's done, but if you want to vote on part one, then we can move forward and just deal with part two.
Well, let's put part one out of, off the table. Let's finish something.
Please.
So, could you, um, so I heard a couple of people that wanted more public input. So in that case, you'd vote no, I guess, against whatever's been proposed. So in that case, you'd vote no, I guess, against whatever's been proposed, that we've worked through here. Does that? So, so the idea on the table was to move ahead with this, but with the qualified number of potential recipients come from the orders and the resolutions. And that sum is then divided by the pool for that respective group. Right, Ron, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. So, how about, Deanna?
I support.
A yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Diane? Uh, no?
Three.
You're on mute.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry, I forgot I had my hand up.
So, no, no, are you a yes or a no on?
Oh, no.
No, okay. Uh, Rick?
Uh, yes, we should move ahead.
Uh, Judy?
Yes, we should move ahead.
Uh, Pitch?
Yes, we should move ahead.
And Riley? You're on, you're on, uh, mute.
Thank you, no, I'm not ready yet. I don't feel like we, it's not there yet.
Okay. And I'm a yes, so it's five-two to move ahead. Okay? All right. Okay.
Can I just ask? Can I just ask for the, for the recorder here, that the motion was essentially to proceed as Ron summarized? And then you asked me, is that legal? And I said, yeah. Is that what the motion was?
That's what I said.
Who seconded the motion?
We don't really have, I'll, I'll make that motion as described by Richard Apicello.
I do already. I made the motion.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I was just clar, I was just clarifying that that's what it was. It was as summarized by Ron.
There was no second.
Right. We took a vote.
No one seconded?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, do you wanna re-vote?
You want me to call the vote?
Yep. I, I think you're spending money, I think you need that roll call.
Sounds good.
Who's? Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
And Hoogland?
No.
Okay, Ron?
Okay, the second part of the economic aid package is, um, also six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, but this is in the waiver of water and sewer bills. Um, the average amount for all businesses and all residents is about a hundred and ten dollars. Okay? Um, if every bill was waived, this would cover about, uh, if I recall, about seventy-nine percent of the, of the accounts that we have in the city. Um, again, uh, some of the eligibility, we had two requirements. The first is they must have been affected by the emergency declaration. And evidence of that effect, economic effect includes, but is not limited to, unemployment, unemployment of a spouse, significant reduction of income if working hours of applicant, uh, who is still employed for the applicant and or the spouse. And they must occupy, the second is they must occupy a residential unit within Lincoln City that is served by water and sewer. And, um, that would be for the residential eligibility. For business eligibility, uh, again, must have been affected by the emergency declaration. Must have a occupational tax permit. I don't have this in here, but based on your last one, I put, and been in business for one year. Um, and must have been identified, uh, again, by Executive Orders, um, twenty oh seven, twenty twelve, and, um, I didn't have this, but it should have this, and, uh, County Order three twenty, uh, three eight, or thirty-two eighty-five. So same qualifications, there are same list of businesses that, um, that, uh, as we had before. I'll take, based on what you've said before, I'll take out, must have physical presence or storefront in Lincoln City, that's a given. Um, preference will be given to businesses with six employees or less. And then the part on national chains, I'll take that out as well. Uh, the amount will be, that will be available to any of the businesses or residents are, is the amount of water and sewer bill at the, I gotta, this actually needs to change. If they are past due, it is at the amount that is due upon application. If they are caught up on their bills, then it will be the amount that is due on their next water bill. Okay? Um, so that's it.
So could you run through that again? So, uh, the amount due on the water bill?
So if I submit an application, if my amount is past due, that's what I would receive a waiver on. If I don't have a past due bill, it would be the amount that would be coming up in my next bill.
Okay, and, and does this imply, you know, one month? Um, you get a one-time waiver?
It, um, it originally began as, uh, whatever's due, okay? Um, however, as we got into it more and discussed it, if you're caught up on your bill, then it is one month is what it comes out to. The other way you could do it is just an average month, um, for whoever is. We just take their average bill divided by twelve and, and, uh, and just give them a, a one-month average.
So next, I guess I'm, I only have to apply once, is?
You only have to apply once.
And once, okay. That's, that's what's pinned down, and whatever's due.
Yeah.
Um, I guess the other question having to do with that, you've got, um, we, we did a, uh, a holiday or, or indicated to folks that we weren't gonna be shutting off water, you know, any late charges, that kinda stuff.
That's already in effect.
Yeah, that's in effect. So that would mean potentially that, um, some of the people might have a bill that was due prior to, to, um, March thirteenth or something.
Yeah, it, it definitely favors somebody who has not paid their bill. Uh, and has built up a, a, a large back due bill. If you want to even that out so that it's, uh, so that it's more equitable, uh, then what we would do is just simply take their average water usage for a year, and that's what they get credited.
For one month? For one month credit?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, for one month.
Uh, Rick?
That was exactly my concern. It, it seemed like we would be offering one month to those who've been paying their bill, but if you haven't paid for a few months, then suddenly you get more. So we're only gonna limit it to one month, and one month is, it doesn't feel like a whole lot to each individual residence, but it certainly adds up for the city. So it's all, it's all we can do, that's all we can do.
Okay, Riley?
I'm not in favor of spending six hundred thousand dollars of money on water bill. You know, like, you know, if it's a mon, if it's only one month, it's one month. Uh, I think that that can be invol, included into the previous discuss, you know, the other discussion as far as the TR, you know, the TRT, I don't know. It's business expenses, you know, uh, one of the qualifying things is part of that. Um, I just think that that's, and that's, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not for this, you know, if they've had four months of back due water pay, has nothing to do with this current crisis. So I'm not for this at all.
And, and I guess, you know, this is a, um, a grant, a freebie, uh, you've, you've got use of the water, but you don't have to pay for it. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm, Mr. Chandler, yeah, you, we, if someone didn't pay in February, we would work out a financing deal with them potentially over so many months. Um, you know, what, why wouldn't we do that, you know, um, for this same, same thing, you know, uh, rather than turning six hundred and thirty-five thousand into a, a freebie?
Mr. Mayor, if I might add one other thing on this, one of the important provisions of this one is that they do have to provide evidence that they have been affected by. So in other words, I just use me as an example, I am fortunate enough to have employers that are keeping me employed. I don't need assistance in my water bill. But somebody who is unemployed would. And so this is one that's important where there is a very critical means test that you, for a resident, has to have been affected by, um, the, the, uh, the, the virus.
Yeah, I, and I appreciate that, I, I'd like to see that. Rick?
Yeah, I think this is to, to Cassandra Hoogland's point. We, we don't have the option of just saying, let's move six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from some contingency fund over to Explore Lincoln City and let them throw more money at businesses. It just doesn't work like that. But what we're saying is between these two funds, we're looking at one point three million dollars that we're putting back into the community. And, um, this is just a way to do that. I, you could, we could come up with other ways, but in the end, what we're doing is putting money, tax dollars back to the residents. And, uh, it, you know, this, this water option, water sewer bill option seems like a way of, you know, if you're unemployed and you can't make your bills, fifty dollars is, is a chunk. And, um, it, it, it's gonna help. So we could come up with other ways, but it's still money out of the city coffer. And, um, this is sort of a neat way of doing it, that's kinda how I see it.
Diane, you raise your hand?
I do like the idea of giving, um, those who are unemployed and have not received any unemployment, um, definitely something because they weren't unemployed by choice. So if the city can help our residents, um, that qualify for that. Like, I wouldn't need that, I'm retired, but for definitely those who are, um, really hurting right now. I think one month of, you know, giving back just the sewer and water bill is a great, a great way to do that. A good, good deal for the community.
I, uh, will say I'm not at all comfortable with this proposal. I thought we were gonna look at, uh, deferral like we did for the urban renewal loans, um, add it to the end of your, but a holiday from paying your water bill isn't, uh, necessarily having your water bill removed. It's being, uh, told that if you don't pay it this month, you will not suffer a penalty, as was stated, we already did that. Um, I thought we were proposing to basically say, uh, you don't have to pay your water bill this month. If you can't, we'll add it to the end and carry it, and basically the payment arrangement thing. I, I'm not sure that you can legally do this. Um, funds, again, uh, that you pay, this is an enterprise fund, you collect the money, and it is, uh, based upon reasonable, uh, relate, there's a relationship there between, uh, the operating of the system, and I'm, I'm not at all comfortable with it. I need more time to determine if it's something that we could even do as a, as a just excuse that that. I don't feel comfortable that we can do, but.
Ron?
If you're willing to look at it, um, but I, I thought we were just going to, um, again, defer.
Sure.
One point, one point of clarification, this is, uh, this would not be from the, um, from the water and sewer funds. Um, they do not have sufficient, uh, reserves to be able to cover this. Um, we would bring back to you a transfer from the general fund, uh, in order to either, uh, to cover these costs, or we would make cuts somewhere. But, uh, in all likelihood, it will come from the general fund because that's where we built the rainy day fund.
I guess the, I, I'm wondering out loud, 'cause I'm not in favor of, um, a grant or a giveaway. Um, I like the idea of deferring. Um, and, and Ron, we, we now, through the finance department, have the ability to work out a finance plan for individuals that get too far behind or a, or far, or miss a payment?
We do.
And is there a, uh, a formula there that, um, on a repayment? And I, the only reason I'm thinking about that, I'm, I, I, I see that Newport is doing something for three months. But when that three months is up, I interpret what their plan is, the whole thing is due, you know, on top of your month. Water, so four months all at once, isn't at all attractive. But if, if in essence, three months are deferred, and you had twelve months to make it up, you know, then you're, you're talking about a month and a third or a month and a quarter, um, over, you know, over twelve months.
Yeah, we, we have implemented that already, that's already in place. And, uh, we do have provisions that we would adapt to this where somebody has a water leak, uh, their bill is really high. And, um, I do have the authority to then spread out the repayment of that, um, over, over time. And, uh, if I recall, there's nothing in the ordinance that specifically says it has to be within three months or four months, and so we usually just work that out. In this case, we probably set a, just a, a, a number of months in which, uh, would guide us in making those decisions. So that every one of them doesn't have to come back through me, but our, our front counter staff could, can just implement the decision.
And in this case, it would be subquant, your qualifier would be that it, um, you're adversely affected by COVID nineteen with unemployment or, or something. Is there a reason why this, why the subcommittee, you know, went this route and didn't do, um, a, a longer, you know, a three-month, for example, and then with a repayment plan?
This was one that the city, the subcommittee did not have a lot of discussion on this, mostly because I had presented it to them and just said, this one's kind of a no-brainer.
Okay. Uh, Deanna?
I, um, I'm sorry, I'm off subject for just a minute, but I'm getting, um, messages from people that they can't see our faces, and they can only see the city council and the clock. So could we ask David to, to get us back on the screen?
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Uh, Diane, you're there? Oh, guess not. Oh, Judy?
Yeah, I do. So it sounds like if we're already deferring payment, is that correct? We have the ability to do that? And we'd be taking this money from the rainy day general fund? Um, we'd have to do it through a transfer? I'm, I'm kind of inclined to hang on to the money in the general fund for the rainy day? That it's gonna come real soon?
Yeah, and that, that's why a repayment program would make more sense, 'cause then you at least get it back. You know, I, I guess the other thing is, you know, this whole idea was, was, you know, a, um, a deferral on sewer and water, trying to get to residents. Um, you know, our other program kinda went businesses, here's some residents, um, opportunity. And, you know, again, a deferral versus just giving, 'cause they are using the water and all the kinda stuff, we have those expenses. So, you know, if, if we can just, um, let them apply through finance as they would now if they were delinquent, acknowledge that they're gonna be, you know, not paying for the next three months or something, with evidence that here's why I, I'm affected. And we just work out a, some kind of a twelve-month repayment plan. Um, Rick?
So I, I heard on the radio the other day that Lincoln County and I forget what other county have the highest unemployment. have the highest unemployment rates in the state, I think it was ten percent. This is the rainiest day I've seen in my lifetime, I'm sure it's probably true of everybody on this call. I, I don't think we've ever seen an economic situation anywhere close to what we're facing right now. So whether, and through the wisdom of city leaders long before me, we have built up quite a substantial fund. It seems like if we don't find, you know, what other situation could we be in where we?
Well, if, if you're, if, if what you're, you're going to is saying, you know, justify why, why you should get a grant and Ron doesn't? I mean?
No, it's got nothing to do, well, I'm not sure what you mean, it's got, no, no, I'm talking about the people who are in need. And it, it seems like this is the time to tap the rainy day fund, is what I'm saying. And I don't know what the legal way of doing that is. I mean, if, if, Mr. Appicello, I certainly appreciate your concern and your caution, but can we have a suggestion on what it is that we can do to help people here?
And, and look, in the, in the past, when asked, can the city make a donation to a not-for-profit entity? I've been able to say yes. However, there's, the state of Oregon, or the constitution of Oregon, doesn't want us making contributions to for-profit entities or individuals. We don't, we, it wouldn't be accepted if I said, let's, Shell Oil, Oil Company's having a rough time, let's cut a check to them, we'll transfer some money from the general fund. You would, you would see that, that, that's not something that the Oregon constitution supports. And when it's an individual, as opposed to a not-for-profit entity, where you can make a donation to a not-for-profit, again, these are public funds, you can't say, well, Dick Anderson's having a rough time, we're gonna give, cut a check for Dick. We, you don't do that with public funds. In the past, when I've had, say I'm prosecuting someone and the defendant cannot afford their evaluation for their treatment program, and this is true. So they would, you'd oar them as part of the plea bargain, they, they'd agree to do their evaluation for drug and alcohol, and then they, they'd be in violation a month later, because they didn't have any money to pay the ninety-dollar evaluation fee. So when I was negotiating other cases, I would obtain donations. We even did this in Lincoln City for a while. I'd accept as part of a plea bargain, a donation of funds which could be used for specified purposes, like paying for drug and alcohol evaluations. And even then, that, we'd use the money and pay for the drug and alcohol evaluation, and then they would sign an agreement to pay it back. Because it's public funds, and public funds don't get delved out to corporations or individuals. You can always legally make donations to not-for-profit entities. You usually use some kind of a process to hear from the thirty entities that would like some money, and then you give ten the, the money. But it's generally not done that way, except sometimes in utility, maybe you have a box to check where everybody's paying an extra couple dollars, which goes to people that don't have enough money, and then apply for assistance, low-income assistance, things like that. So you can do that, but not generally with public funds, usually with donated funds.
Mr. Mayor?
Debbie might be able to answer this better, but thanks.
Okay, Ron? How does, oh, Ron?
How does this differ from the state having to give back property taxes when their, when their mountain reach is too high?
When their what?
Is I understand there is a provision that if, if the surplus of the state reaches a certain point, they have to give back their property tax. But this is, how does this differ?
No, no, you're talking about the kicker?
Yeah.
No, no, that's a budget issue. So when your, when your revenue comes in higher than what you forecasted in your budget, that comes back to the citizen, because you didn't need it.
So I'm still not sure what, I still see a similarity in this, that we're, I, I don't, I, I guess I don't see that, I, I'm struggling to find out why the cities can't, I, I don't see the relationship between forgiving a debt versus giving out a, a grant.
Maybe a better way of doing this would be to give the money to an organization that, to a nonprofit organization that specializes in helping people with their utility bills.
There you go. Except, utility company is us.
Yeah.
Well, but, so you end up doing the same thing, giving the money to a nonprofit, and they end up giving the money to people that need it, that end up paying the money back to us, so.
Debbie has identified a legal way to do what you're.
So why do we have to have a middleman? I mean, we're the utility company.
So.
Well, they could validate need for one part, which we, we, we're not really equipped to do.
Judy, Judy, you've got your hand up? Oh, okay. So, you know, now, now, I, I guess the question first maybe is, you know, a, not the right term, a grant, forgiveness, or a deferral. I think that's what we've kind of got bogged down into. And I, I might remind you who haven't paid close enough attention, that, you know, yes, unemployment is a slow process. But people who file and are eligible get unemployment. In addition, for the next four months, you get six hundred dollars a week. So another twenty-four hundred to your income. And you get a twelve-hundred-dollar gift coming in, I don't know what you, stimulus check, coming in. So I, I understand the pain of unemployment, you know, been there, done that. That's why I like a deferral. You know, they're using resources, we can make it easy on them, I think that's our role. And, you know, we just push it out, it's, it's about terms. But why should the rest of the community subsidize, you know, this case? So, you know, I'm all for a deferral, and, you know, three months, deferral. And then spread out long-term, or whatever the term is, that we'd normally do, for someone delinquent. So it doesn't hurt them when we recover and they're back working. But maybe, is that the question on the table, that it's, let's go around the room and say, you know, do you want, you know, a, a one-month forgiveness? Or do you want, you know, a three-month deferral with repayment? All right, Deanna?
I just, I just wanted to say that our goal is to get money out there to our residents. And I guess businesses in this case. So I just wanted to say that I really like the idea that Debbie had, and I was gonna raise my hand for the same idea. Because I know that we can give to nonprofits, nonprofits can, can do the work of making sure it gets the monies out there. And I guess the only part of that is that it, that money then comes back to us, which we weren't trying to do. But it does give them the ability of not having to come up with their own hundred dollars for that month, but to actually get a grant for that amount.
Others? So a one-month gift or a three-month deferral? Riley?
I think it's.
I've watched you.
Yeah, yeah, it should be, I think I'm in favor of a three-month deferral. I don't feel like spending, you know, it'd be great if we could spend that six hundred thousand dollars on something else, you know? But I hear Mr. Appicello stating that we can't, we just can't do that, and unfortunate, you know, and, and as much as I would love to, I, you know. But I think a three-month deferral with a payment plan, and if it's extreme cases, maybe a six-month payment plan. But, you know.
Yep. Mitch?
I hundred percent agree, three months deferral.
Judy?
Does this include nonprofits?
It doesn't distinguish between nonprofits or anybody else. If you've been affected, if you're on the sewer water and you're affected, you've got to prove that you've been affected.
Okay, just, just checking for clarification, I like the deferral.
Nick?
Well, I like the deferral only because it sounds like we can't do the waiver, so that it's not an option. But then I certainly am in favor of increasing what we can do for the nonprofits. Judy, Judy put forth a plan we haven't talked to, talked about yet, for helping the food banks. And we could certainly give a substantial amount of money to make sure that those food banks are.
Have a plan.
Deanna?
Well, I really like the idea of getting the money out there to them, and so I'm gonna stick with my Debbie vote.
Diane?
Deferral.
So it, it sounds like a, a deferral would be the way to go, is, would be the consensus.
Isn't this already going on, isn't this already proposed and enacted by the state?
What?
A, a, a utility deferment? Isn't this already in it, isn't this already done by the state?
No.
Are you sure? Isn't, wasn't there a?
What, what we're not doing is we're not turning off people's water. But that was a city order, I don't think that was a state order, maybe it was a state order, but certainly we did it.
So this is, in addition to, we won't shut you off, now we're also talking about a separate, oh hey, by the way, you won't have to pay all of it next month, but over the course of three months, you can make payments.
Or, or twelve months.
Or whatever, right, right, right.
For the next three months, you don't have to worry about paying.
But that's what we're talking about, we're talking about the difference between giving people six hundred thousand dollars, or, hey, guess what, you can make payments.
Yep, yeah.
Right.
Back when you're working, so to take some of the pressure off.
Right.
And, so, you okay, Ron? All right, okay. Okay. You guys are wearing us out at eight forty-six, Mitch wanted to take off by nine, you know?
He wanted to go home?
Yeah, he wanted to go home. Okay, so this is Judy Casper time, huh?
Did we vote on that, whatever we were doing, deferral? We did? Okay.
So we probably should do a, a motion to make Appicello and Kathy happy. So the motion would be on the, can we call these sewer and water utilities to a three-month deferral?
But to be paid back over at least a year, I mean?
Well, but I, I would say tie right into the existing finance plan that Ron has set up with the finance department. You know, to, to make it so it's, you know, not, so repayment doesn't hurt. You know, it's, it's not two months. Yeah, spread it out.
I would authorize Ron, in this motion, I would authorize Ron to create a, a three-month deferral and allow Ron to add it to their obligation. And more importantly, to let him use his emergency powers. If for some reason there's something in the code that says you have to pay it over a certain amount of time, that he can vary from that to get you the twelve-month payback period. Because I'm not, I can't stay with certainty right now that there isn't some limitation on his authority in those agreements right now. So give him that authority.
So that would be the motion, can I have someone?
Still moved.
Second?
By Mitch? All right, is there a second? By Judy, thank you. Any questions, Ron, since we just love, you know, putting stuff to you?
Nope, I'm in good shape, thank you.
All right, how about a roll call, Kathy?
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Inte?
I'm changing my vote to yes.
Hoglin?
Yes.
Ben Kuz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so shall we let Judy talk to us about this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, well, taking our community members' letter to heart from last time about Maslow's hierarchy and food and shelter being the top. I set out to find out how we feed people in the city. And as you all know, the school bus goes by five times a day on the school route to feed kids. They bring food for three meals, a little extra on Friday to hold them through to Saturday. Let's see, food banks are in pretty good shape, as you see, everybody's donating, and we recently got, I think it's eight million dollars into Oregon for the food banks, the stimulus, stimulus money. But what I did notice is that there's groups of people that are feeding people in their kitchens. And so I explored who they are and how this works. And one of the group is Saint James, the Episcopal Church, where three, three or four churches get together, four, Saint James, Four Square, Congregational, and Saint Augustine. And they take turns cooking, and they feed dinners to people on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They donate food, and Saint James is the one who does the Saturday breakfast, and Saint James provides most of that food. And each church is, is assigned a week that they'll cook. And then they serve out of the kitchen, and they kind of, it's a grab-and-go, so nobody lingers around, and they try to keep distance. And so they serve approximately forty-five to fifty meals each time. And so I, I tried to find out how much it costs them and where, where they get the supplies. And so come to find out, they shop mostly at cash and carry. McKay's does provide eggs, or some foods that are near exploration, gives them to them. So figuring out that it costs about a hundred and twenty dollars a meal times twelve meals is fifteen hundred dollars a month that these people put out for these food, for these population at their church. And anybody else who happens to be along, they'll feed. The other one is the Shiloh Gathering Place, even though we, we don't know it's open all the time, it's open a lot. It serves meals as needed, Monday to Thursday. In fact, if the phone, phone number's on the door, and if somebody's hungry at any time of night, they can call them up and Martha will come down and open it. They're the only other place in town besides the food pantry that gives food off the shelves. People do come and donate cases of food to the, to Shiloh, along with the churches who give generously to the Shiloh. They serve meals, March to January, over three thousand meals. And typically, they serve five to six thousand meals a year, so that was just this year of the meal increase. Shiloh purchased most, most of the food themselves. They have a bedding service where they give food that can't be bought with SNAP cards, you know, like diapers, laundry soap, cleaning supplies, things like that. And bless his heart, the guy, the manager at McKay's is the one who, who has these punch cards. And the people are given maybe twenty-five or fifty dollars, depending on their needs, to purchase things. But they cannot buy junk food, or alcohol, or cigarettes, or anything that's, you know, not healthy and needed. And the other purchase voucher they have is through Space Gas, Space Age. They're given like a fifteen-dollar punch card, and they work with the manager there. So their, their biggest money needs are the, are the food cards and the gas cards. And they use those for about a thousand dollars a month, although gas prices are lower, so that helps them out a lot. So their monthly cost for that, that product would be two thousand dollars. And we have the Eagles in conjunction with Dan and, Dan from the sixteen forty-six, and Frank Napoleon from Oceans Apart Catering. They all got together in Eagles' fabulous kitchen and just started cooking for people who needed meals. And basically, it's eighty-five to ninety percent seniors who are medically fragile and immune deficient, immune system deficiency. I was just talking to, today, they go to places like the Jetty Apartments. Um, I was just talking to, today they go to places like, um, the Jetty Apartments, Beacon House, um, they have over five hundred meals a week that they cook. And the way that they find out about them is on Facebook. The, um, Dan, not Dan, Dave Randleman is the president of the Eagles Lodge there. And they contact him. They have seventeen volunteer drivers who come on Tuesdays and Thursdays at one-thirty. And they deliver these five hundred meals during the week. And I came in there on Thursday. Everybody's in masks and gloves and they have tubs and tubs of rolls and cookies. And these rolls are made by, um, the Depot Bay Bakery. And the cookies or cupcakes are made by My Petite Sweet. And so the food that they, um, use there, they have a vendor, it costs them about two dollars a meal. And they use their food stuffs through U.S. Foods, which is where Dan purchased it. So their food runs about a thousand dollars a week or four thousand dollars a month. Now, because they're very conscious, they have biodegradable boxes. And those cost fifty dollars for two hundred of them. So my, my secretary made a grave error there. She's been in the house too long. Uh, on the copy sheet was wrong. It should be a thousand dollars a week. And so the monthly cost is four thousand. Um, biodegradable boxes a month are four hundred dollars. So then I got to talking to the people who bake. And, uh, My Petite Sweet, she bakes every week, uh, five hundred cupcakes and cookies. She gets most of her purchases for products through cash and carry. And her costs are about six hundred dollars a month. And that's Michelle Mason. And then we have Ray, forgot how to say his name now. Ray. He's a former Safeway, Safeway Baker manager, manager, and he also baked for Sally Sham. He bakes on Tuesdays and Thursdays. He bakes five hundred rolls a week, or hoagie buns or hamburger buns, depending on what the menu of the day is for the Eagles. Um, in the beginning, he provided a loaf of French bread for every senior on the route. And his costs, which he gets most through, most supplies through cash and carry, is about sixteen hundred dollars a month. So all this monthly food cost, the preparation for supplies alone, comes to ten thousand one hundred dollars. And it was my hope that we could somehow find the funds to help supplement this great program that these volunteers are doing with their own time and their own dedication. Um, they just keep going. And now that we've extended it another month, I was hoping maybe there'd be some way we could figure out how to contribute to this. If we want to go for three months, my total there is thirty thousand three hundred dollars. Again, my secretary was tired. So that's what I found out about what's happening in our community. Um, the way that the, the people from the Eagles feed the folks is they'll leave them, individually they'll leave them on a chair or at the doorway. But I understand that the senior citizens are very, very frightened of the virus. They're, they're just fearful. They're scared. And so they'll call ahead and say, put a chair out or we're here in the lobby. We'll leave the, the storage container there, come down and get it. And when they deliver, they all have masks and gloves and aprons now. But they, they say there's a great deal of fear in our senior population for the virus. So that's it. My concern is that, um, their kindness and dedication should not go unsupported. That's it.
Riley?
So yes, I have, I am one of the drivers for this program that she's talking about. And I have been doing it for maybe a month now. And absolutely, um, these guys are working hard and they're all masked up. And I've made masks to donate, you know, people donate, you know, you see it every week, people bringing in masks or gloves or things like that to help facilitate this program. And, you know, I would be, am in support of a way in which to, you know, fund them in, in any way. I know Marcy Baker, I believe, was talking about this a couple of, a couple of meetings ago.
Right.
Um, and so I think that separately, if there was a way in which we could help facilitate, I'm full on in support and absolutely couldn't be more right. These people are like, stop, stop right there. Do not come in. I'm like, okay, okay. Like, I know. And we do wear gloves and, and, you know, a mask and everything and everything's from the up and up. But, um, and it's, and it's crucial because sometimes these people, you know, this is their interaction with other humans. And, um, and it's really, you know, an opportunity to just say hello, say their name. That's why I try to do is to say hi, you know, hi to them. But anyway, um, yeah, so great, great, great programs.
Sure. So, um, anybody else? Um, Judy, could you, um, I, I don't think this, these are nice examples, so thank you. But I, there are others, I'm assuming, that you haven't identified. Um, so I'm, I'm trying to figure out, do you have an idea of supporting these or supporting a fund or?
I have an idea of supporting these.
Of supporting these?
These, these have, these have risen to the top of service as far as I can see in the community. And, um, they're viable and they've been going on for over a month. And I can identify vendors where products can be purchased to help them.
Right. So I, I guess, just as I went through this, um, the Saint James Program has been ongoing all year, uh, and for years and years and years. Um, and it does vary, um, because I'm also involved in that and you end up taking food, cooking food there. So it's not all, you know, one place. Somehow, you know, citizens are donating money or, or food to be cooked and dispersed. The, the Shiloh Gathering, as, you know, they've been the recipients for the last couple of years of over ninety thousand dollars from the city. Uh, so, you know, certainly appreciate what they do, you know, um, I'm assuming they're using that money to pay for food. Um, I, I agree with the Eagles and the Grill, you know, that is, that is the new element, uh, co-op that has come. But I, I guess as I was looking at this, you know, those who are affected, if that's what we're trying to do during this crisis, you know, the schools now are, are sending three meals out per family, you know, that has kids. So it used to be just lunch and, and breakfast served at, at school. Now they're doing the equivalent of three meals for the family. Uh, so there's money there.
But let's, let's, let's qualify that with what a meal is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, if, Mitch, I'm sure.
Well, well, but, but.
But there's a difference in a meal and a, and a stickless corn dog.
Oh, again, let's, my point is there are other entities going on. I think we've missed some. I read and saw where Mo's donated a whole bunch of chowder to the system, you know? So thank you. They don't normally do that. Um, certainly Backpack Program has been, had, because they're still going. And, you know, even Marcy's Bistro, I know Marcy will give food away if you can't pay. So, you know, if, and you of all people, Riley, who likes to touch the public often and get input, here's an opportunity where maybe you ought to make a long list and, you know, come back. But I, you know, even Family Promise is adversely affected because the churches are down. And normally the churches supplied meals to the families. So, I mean, the, the list goes on when you start identifying, and, and hopefully we should, because they should be recognized. Organizations, and what was it? Last week we had a food drive in town, you know, for the food pantry, plus cash, you know, or what, four thousand, five thousand dollars went to the food pantry. So, I, you know, I'm just wondering what the machine kind of looks like, um, and, and where this goes. Because I think, again, you run into a risk of writing a check for one and forgetting somebody.
But the machine, the machine is that this is a crisis situation.
Right.
And, and even Saint James is giving more and more meals. Saint Augustine probably won't be part of this anymore. Um, the Eagles, they're, they're putting all those out to the fragile medical seniors who haven't been fed before. And the list is growing. There, you can't accept any more people. This is like a pop-up, a pop-up community.
Right.
Volunteer feeding the people. I'm sure there's a lot of people who could apply for our nonprofit grants. This wouldn't even fall into there. I'm picking up the people that, that are doing something out of the kindness of their heart and out of their pocket. And I'm just saying, if there's any way we can help them, then we should do it. Because the only days I can see where they're not getting food is Friday and Sunday. The school, the school food, I just talked to a parent today, the meals are a bagel with cream cheese, uh, or cereal. And then we might have a sandwich with an apple. And then we might have a hamburger for dinner with some broccoli. Those are the three meals. Those are the meals. I wouldn't call them greatly substantial, but adequate. And she said the kids do enjoy them. And she's very appreciative of them.
Okay. And I, maybe you didn't hear me, but I was very complimentary to the Eagles, uh, co-op. I think that is the one that jumped right up and stepped up. So, you know, I, I'm very appreciative of that. And I think we all should be. But my point was that there's a lot of organizations in town that are doing food. And I'm glad they are.
Okay. Well, there you have a piece of information.
Okay. Rick?
Uh, yeah, I want to mention the food pantry and, um, not to worry anybody, but Neighbors for Kids is also, uh, doing hundreds of meals a week along with activity packages for the, you know, kids' activities for, uh, parents to, who are dealing with their, their children at home. And those are much appreciated. And I don't want to, uh, I really appreciate what the school district's doing, but, um, I, I have heard similar concerns about the, the food they're handing out. And, uh, the Neighbors for Kids, incidentally, is, um, paying for most of it, what it's doing through generous grants from the USDA and the Oregon Department of Education, which have, which have been wonderful as far as providing money for food and most of the staffing, but not quite all of the staffing. And so they could actually use some help to. So I'm wondering if maybe the thing to do is to pick a dollar amount, since we've struggling to find a way to come up with a fund to help people, if we gave it some thought and came up with a dollar amount and had, would we ask people to apply, ask these programs to apply? Um, and give other groups a shot to, um, and I'm sorry, and, uh, Mayor, you mentioned Family Promise. And I was also thinking about, um, more money available for vouchers for homeless people, homeless families who are staying in hotels. And those hotels could use some help paying for that. So there's, that's another, another option.
Rick, that, that's being taken care of through the county and part of the, um, the cares package. Some of the money's coming down from the state and the federal government for that, for paying for motels and hotels.
Okay. As, as I recall, the county gave a ten thousand dollar voucher and we gave twenty-five hundred. Is that, is that continuing?
Yeah, there's, there's more money coming in, yeah. And especially now that, that people have to be quarantined if they have the, the virus. They have to be put somewhere. And they're suggesting that they be put in, in motels. And so that's in the progress too. But it's a great idea.
Okay. So what's, what's the proposal? Uh, Deanna?
I just wanted to say I would like to support Judy's list here for two months and, and then also set aside some money for those other, um, the other organizations that are also feeding people that we've heard of, like Marcy's is feeding and Family Promise and Backpack Program and Neighbors for Kids. And, um, the food pantry, although they're, they have quite a bit now, they might not need the funding exactly right now, but.
Yeah, as I stated before, you can legally make a donation to a non-for-profit entity. If there's a for-profit entity that you want to do something, you can contract for services with that for-profit entity.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If we, what if we purchased, um, gift certificates from the places that Judy has listed for the, um, businesses that these different entities are buying their food? Mr. Appicello? Mute?
You're, if you make a donation to a non-for-profit entity, you can obviously go purchase goods and services and then donate that to a non-for-profit, if that is what you're asking. The other way to do it is just to make the donation to the non-for-profit entity and let them use the money to acquire those services.
And Ron, do you have any idea, or Debbie, where, um, you know, twenty, thirty, fifty thousand would come from?
You would probably have to pull it from our contingency.
From the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Rick, you still, yeah?
Uh, I just want to, I kind of wanted to make the point when we were talking about the water bills, that even with the deferral, as Mr. Chandler pointed out, the, the, while that money that's being deferred is not coming into the city, the expenses continue. And so we're using our contingency fund to run the water and sewer plan, right, Mr. Chandler?
Yep.
Um, so there, that is money going out, that, that even though we are going to get it back over time theoretically, if people can pay their bills, uh, is still a cost to us. That said, I wonder, I don't want to put a number on the table right now, because I'm just talking out of, through my hat, but is there a number that we can come up with? Recommend, based on this very good work that Judy's done, thank you Judy, um, along with some of these other organizations and, and say, I mean, if we're not going to be waiving those, those bills, we had been talking about six hundred thousand dollars, I don't think we'd have to come anywhere close to that. But could we come up with a number that says, here's what we want to do to give back to people in need?
Deanna?
I just want to offer fifty thousand dollars and maybe go with Judy's list, um, for three months rather than two months, because that might actually be the length of time that it takes people to get back on their feet once we start opening up everything. And, and that would give us a buffer of twenty thousand dollars for these other, um, nonprofits or other ways to get the money out to the people who are doing this good work. And I also wanted to say that I would hope that we could do one other type of thing besides this food, but which would be a thank you to the, um, people who work in the grocery stores. They are kind of front line. And so I don't know what that would be. But that's another idea. And I meant.
I like Deanna's idea.
The employees of grocery stores, but that's another discussion. But as far as Judy's proposal, I'd fully fund it at the three months and add twenty thousand dollars to somehow identify these other nonprofits and other people who are, um, bringing food to people during this really rough time.
So, um, a motion of fifty thousand to, to assign fifty thousand from the general fund for food, um, sup, not supplement, food resources. Um, yep. Hello? Rick, you there?
Yeah, uh, if that was Deanna's motion, I'll second it.
Well.
We need to find out the.
We're, we're trying to get the, the motion out. We're, we're trying to figure out what the wording is.
Could it be a grant? Could we, um, do an emergency grant, Mr. Appicello? For these, for this list?
It, it, he's already indicated. It's got to be a. It, it, he's already indicated, it's got to be a non, nonprofit or services. So, you know, we're okay. We don't need an emergency or anything. You know, the, the key is, um, you know.
Well, may I? We, we have-
Right.
Yeah, we have, um, maybe a, what would you call it, a grant for, um, food provisions? Um, for these non, these groups feeding our community? And there's also the Backpack, Neighbors for Kids, Food Pantry and Family Promise that come to mind for recipients as well. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
For 50,000?
Yes. Over time, it doesn't have to go out tomorrow except to Judy's list.
It could go out, it could go out like monthly.
Yeah.
You're, you're making a motion to donate to the nonprofit, uh, entities on Judy's list and, and contract for services with, um, entities that are not nonprofits on that list? Is that?
I think they are not, that's except for Marcy.
We could contract with Marcy to-
Yeah, you can, illegally, you can enter into a contract and say, we'd like to buy some food provision services from you. How many cupcakes can you make us?
Pizzas.
Pizzas.
Yeah. So it, it will also, you'll look to all of those businesses to make sure that those that aren't nonprofits are included-
Have a contract.
All of them.
Then have a con- you create a contract with them. Is that what you're thinking?
What?
Nonprofit?
I was, I think the distinction, Riley, is the ones that are already doing it. The people have stepped up to do this, that that's, would be the list.
And contracting, under our public contracting rules, a direct award can be any contract less than $10,000. You don't have to do competitive quotes or bidding if it's less than 10 grand. So you want to pay someone $4,000 to make pizza, then you can do that.
Okay.
Ron?
I, I just want to make sure I understand this.
Yeah.
You are not asking us to go buy 500 cupcakes.
I know.
Um, we would be, we would be doing the same program we do with Ed's program where he would be able to use that as a promotional thing, but we're not going to go buy 500 cupcakes, right?
Yeah. Nor, nor do we want you to distribute them.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll eat 490 of them.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Rick, Rick seconded.
Uh, can I just add, I, I do feel like, just to be clear, because I don't, I don't think it's a conflict, I've, I've become acting chairman of the board at Neighbors for Kids, but I don't think that, that matters.
You're not compensated.
No.
Well, good for you.
Okay. Um, so, being dollars, Kathy, could you, uh?
Sure.
Little call?
Anderson?
Yeah.
Casper?
Yes.
Inten?
Yes.
Hoadland?
Yes.
Pooz? Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Matt, one other thing. Um, I want to remind everyone that, um, the help program in the school district is also in need of our direct donations, Homeless Education and Literacy Project. And you can send donations that are needed either to the northern part of the county, the central part of the county, or the southern. And I personally have been contributing to the northern part. You can send it to, um, Lincoln City School District Help Program, heel box 1110, Newport 97365, or you can go on their website, um, under the school district and donate. Heel box 1110, Newport, Help Program. They, they definitely need help.
Okay. Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Chandler, there's a fourth item, uh?
Yes, uh, these are specific requests that have been made to you. Um, the first one is a request by the Lincoln City Cultural Center. Uh, you had received this information two weeks ago, but the request is this. Um, the city's continued support is crucial for the survival of our nonprofit and many services it provides to our community. Therefore, we respectfully ask the city consider the following measures to help the center through the crisis. A, fulfill the existing visitor center's contract, which is good through the end of the June, at its present level without hiatus. In addition, it would be helpful to receive direction from Explore Lincoln City on the future of this contract opportunity, whether we'll be going to bid and if so, when. That's for the visitor center portion of it, which we pay $35,000 per year. B, allow current, um, Explore Lincoln City nonprofit grants to be administered and paid out in new ways. For example, events and activities that were previously funded may not be possible due to COVID-19 restrictions. And easy enough, the grant restrictions and reporting timelines may allow for earlier release of those funds. C, allow the 2020 Explore Lincoln City nonprofit grants be awarded in a different way so that those TRT monies can be used to keep nonprofits like ours afloat. We request that the grant fund be increased and the current grant guidelines be expanded to allow nonprofits to use grants for personnel and operation costs. Currently not allowed. We also request that private businesses be prevented from using this fund as the inclusion of these businesses may prevent smaller nonprofits from being competitive. This action is in line with the changes in grant requirements at the Oregon Arts Commission and the Oregon Cultural Trust and will help the entire arts and events infrastructure of our tourist-based economy. That was the first request. The second request is to defer or waive payments for city property that is leased. We've had one, um, business that has asked this. The city currently leases seven properties. They are to the Lincoln City Cultural Center, Career Tech, uh, Backpack for Kids, McKay's Market, Salmon Drift Creek Watershed, North Pacific, which is Mo's Land Lease, and the Lincoln City Glass Center. The estimated monthly revenue from all leases is approx- is $21,515. It may vary a little bit, but that's generally what it is.
Okay. Didn't we get another, and I couldn't tell if, if there was a monetary request, but from the, um, Salvation Army?
We did, and I looked, we got that today, and I looked through it, and I couldn't tell that either, uh, councillor, so I'm not sure exactly what they were asking.
Not either.
Actually, I have a call with them tomorrow, so maybe I can smoke that out. Uh, so, um, the cultural center, it, um, Ed, uh, you're, this is your world and your, your budget. Um, you, I assume got them planned through the fiscal year anyway with the, the lease on the visitor center?
Uh, that's correct. Our intent was to pay for that through the, uh, end of the contract. Um, at that point, given the amount of money, we're talking about $35,000, the city would require that it be, um, put out for bid. Um, the, the other consideration there is that, you know, going forward, uh, until things change, the amount of revenue coming in my department right now is zero. We, we have no money coming in at all. So when it comes to money for a visitor center operation, um, especially in a building that's currently closed right now, uh, that's a big question mark. Would, would it end up there if we did a bid? I don't know. Um, and regarding the request for the grant program, um, until we know there's money coming in to fund the grant program, I, I don't know if we can commit to any of what we just heard.
Mr. Mayor, I might point out that, um, as I have discussed with the Budget Committee, um, I have a pretty lengthy list of projects that if they get approved by the Budget and Committee and then by, or rec- approved and then adopted by the City Council, doesn't necessarily mean that they will be going forward, and the grants program is one of those. Uh, and it's solely because, uh, Explore Lincoln City is entirely dependent on transient room tax, and we just don't know how we're going to go forward or how, what the impact's going to be.
So would it be appropriate to just, uh, respond to the cultural center than, uh, one acknowledging through the fiscal year, um, that Ed's paying, but the other stuff is all in limbo because of, uh, unknown revenue? And, you know, when we know more, we'll, you know, let them know? Regarding grants and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I think that would be fair.
Okay. Mr. Appicello, you wanted to?
Yeah, um, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, uh, on the, uh, contract, obviously, uh, we, we, we've paid for, uh, a service we're not receiving, uh, for, you know, if we don't enforce that, well, we don't enforce it. Uh, I do think you need, you, as Ed mentioned, you have to go out for bid, dollar amount for the next fiscal year. Uh, on the, uh, current, uh, grants, um, they're TRT funds, and so we can't just say, sure, go ahead, use TRT funds for whatever purpose, and we discussed this discussion before, and you're personally responsible under 294-100 if they're misspent. So I would suggest that if they're asking for grants that were issued, that for events that got canceled, uh, no, you don't get to keep the money and use it for something else because then you're personally liable for that. So for next year, sure, I agree with Ed, we, we don't know if we'll have those grants, but, uh, we're not going to give money and say, go ahead and use it for, it's TRT money, go use it for something else.
Right. So, you know, really, that, you just need to put it back to them in, in writing as to, it is up in the air. You okay with that, Ron?
Yep, just writing it on, I'm good with that.
All right. Uh, then let's, these, these leases? Um, thoughts on the, the leases? And only one, one request at this time, is that, Ron?
Just one.
Okay. Um,
Your Honor, I think you have another issue of deferral. I mean-
Right.
For a non-for-profit, you, someone wants you to waive it, fine, but for, uh, for profits, I would think you're in a deferral situation.
Right. Yep. Um, and i- is there, you know, a, a timeframe, Ron, on the one request as far as how many months or?
If I recall, I think they were saying four to six months.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And would it, would it not be the same kind of thing of a deferral and then, uh, payment plan?
Well, there's, there's a couple of options that could be available, or three, three options that I can identify. Um, you either then simply increase the rent or the lease at the end of that time so it, uh, gets paid back over the course of the other lease, of the payments.
Right.
You could, um, you could have a balloon payment at the very end, uh, to pay for that deferment, or you could extend their lease, but that would require further action on your part.
I'd rather think of, uh, you know, getting a little bit each month rather than a balloon payment at the end would be my-
Yeah. That's what we were thinking.
But I, I would say in this case, you know, just deal with the ones that ask.
Okay.
Does anybody have a, an opinion? No? Okay.
Would you treat it like the, the water billing?
Right.
Three months, and, uh, you're allowed to pay back over 12?
Yep. Or certainly before the end of the lease, depending on what the lease is on. Okay. All right. You, uh-
Do we have consent on those items?
Oh. Is that, uh, can we have unanimous consent that, um, that proposed on the leases and the cultural center? Response?
Yes, I agree.
Anybody, anybody with a counter? Hearing none, unanimous consent. All right. That was fun, and, uh, Mitch is still with us. Um, can we finish up with, uh, how about, uh, economic development, economic, oh, God. Oh. Uh, is Allison still on there where, uh, this needs to be done tonight for the city?
Hello, yes, I'm still here, and it does not need to be done tonight.
Could, do you, do you really mind if we defer to the next?
Uh, no, it, it's whatever you choose.
Okay. Could we, is that all right, everybody defer this one to next council meeting? All right.
Thank you.
Sorry, Allison.
That's okay, I understand.
Okay. Um, so let's deal with the Lincoln Square ADA improvements.
Good evening, everybody, this is Lila.
Hi, Lila.
Hi, I'm trying to figure out how to keep this short. It looks long-winded. Um, the question is, should the City Council approve an increase in contingency for the Lincoln Square ADA improvements in US 101, Southeast 8th to Southeast 14th? And what we're asking for, we had, um, we put in a fairly low contingency for this project. Um, the total bid amount was, um, 916,190, and 513,800 was ODOT's part of it, and 403,182 was the city's part of it at Lincoln Square. And we only asked for a $20,000 contingency, and we have some change orders that were necessary, and the ones for, for the city were mainly to do with the Signal Loops and the Burger King side that we're doing. And so what we're asking council for is an additional 25,000 to cover those change orders. And it still keeps us pretty close, um, including, you know, because part of this change order is 12,419 dollars and 70 cents, and that's ODOT's, and ODOT is paying for that. But we did our contract in combination, and so, um, we're asking an additional 25,000 to cover change orders one through five and cover any additional change orders needed to complete the project. And all change orders are approved through the city manager and ODOT. And so, um, we're asking council to, to approve that, those change orders and that increase in contingency.
Could I, I just ask, why at 25,000, why that wouldn't fall under the city manager's, um, provision?
I'll probably let Richard talk about that, but I think it's mainly because we're combining, um, the 17,000 and the 12,000.
There was a provision, uh, remember, uh, we had a discussion a couple of years back, and we amended, uh, provision of the code. It talks about contract amendments and the delegation for the manager, and, and it's not the language I drafted, but you, uh, changed it to say it's, it'll be, uh, his delegation will be consistent with the amount of the contingency. And in, in this case, you approved it with a small contingency. Had you gone with the language I wrote, you would have had $25,000 or, but you didn't do that, so.
Oh.
All your fault.
Okay, well, there, you, you told us so, sorry. But that answers that question. Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, Deanna?
I just, I have a question for you, Lila, it's nice to hear your voice. Um, you know, the loops that you refer to in this list, the detector loops, were, wasn't that in the original plan, or was that added later? I mean, it says add, but it seems like that should have been- I mean, it says add, but it seems like that should have been, you know...
It was designed through ODOT's engineers, that was their donation to our intersection, but there were some changes that had to be made to those, and so we did have money in there for, for that part of it, but it just, it went over the design, the way they designed it, went over our bid items.
I didn't think it was you, Lila.
Yeah, it was, yeah, they just, they had to adjust them, they weren't, you know, so many times, things, when you start digging them up, aren't what you think is in the ground, and that was, it was a change because of that.
So, Lila, I assume you have twenty-five thousand in your capital fund?
Yes, we do, and, and we might not, you know, get up to that twenty-five, I think this hopefully is the, the last unknown thing that we might discover out there.
Okay. So, any other questions of Lila? Entertained a motion to approve the request?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve an increase in the contingency for the Lincoln Square ADA improvements at US 101 and, and Southeast 8th to Southeast 14th PED ramps construction project for twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second it. Sorry, Mitch is going to have it.
Mr. Parsons? Seconded, all right. So we have a motion to approve with a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Casper?
Judy? Oh.
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. And how about the change to construction award on Highway 101 sidewalk project?
Yes, this is Southeast 19th to Southeast 23rd, and the question is, should the city council award the construction contract to complete the Highway 101 sidewalk and bike improvements on, on that section? And staff's recommending that the council award the construction contract to complete the Highway 101 sidewalk and bike improvements to KNE Escavating, and they, they came in and helped finish this project for us. We had some issues with it, and so council options are to award the construction contract to complete the Highway 101 sidewalk bike improvements to KNE Escavating.
So the project's already done, right?
Yes, this just went, it went over our, our limit, so the city manager exercised his authority under LCMC 2.0508082, the contract, because the work remaining was less than a hundred thousand, and the circumstances created a risk public health and safety, and KNE excavation, who was second-low bidder on the job, was able to mobilize and get that done for us. And so it, I think we're staying within our budget amount, but it, it went over the hundred thousand that they, that the city manager has authority to do.
So, so, Lila, you're, you're saying that KNE was able to bring it in at the R and R lower price?
Yes.
Huh. Okay.
But it was still over the hundred thousand, which we thought we, we might be able to stay.
Save, yep. All right. Any questions? Seeing none, not entertain a motion. Parsons?
All right. Make the motion to award the construction contract to complete the Highway 101 sidewalk and bike improvements from Southeast 19th Street to Southeast 23rd Street to KNE Escavating Incorporated.
Okay.
And we have a second from Mr. Hoagland. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you, Lila. All right, city manager report?
Yes, Lila, yep. Just a couple of things. We have been working for quite some time now on a reopening schedule of the city functions. This is what the city government does, and we have received, we had this ready a little while ago, and then we received the governor's reopening plan, and so we've adapted our, our plan for opening into the governor's phases. And I just wanted to take a minute and let you know as to what you can expect as, as far as the opening. Phase one of the governor's direction requires that all vulnerable individuals should continue to shelter in place, all individuals when in public should maximize, including parks, outdoor recreation areas, shopping areas should maximize physical distance, avoid socializing in groups of more than ten people, that's a significant one. That affects what we can open and what we can't. Close common areas when people are likely to congregate and interact, minimize non-essential travel, and continue telework as possible. So the items that we looked at as far as our city operations go during phase one is that the city hall would remain closed with the minimum staff in building and maintain current numbers of individuals teleworking. Lincoln City Parks staff and Public Works would maintain their current staff but would continue to work in staggered shifts. The Lincoln City Recreation Community Center would remain closed with, with the minimum staff in the building. As to the, as to the parks and the open space, that phase one, we're still evaluating this, could trigger an opening of the open space, but not parks like Regatta Park where it would be difficult to regulate, to keep groups of ten. Playgrounds congregate, and it would be hard to regulate that. That we're still evaluating. The public, the library would remain closed. There would continue to be no employee travel, and the police department would continue its current operational status. When phase two comes in, the significant change in the phase two of the governor's plan is the gatherings increased to fifty, non-essential travel can resume, schools and gyms can open under physical distancing. In this case, city hall would open up, we would bring back a limited number of employees that would be able to help us still be able to deal with, or to deal with public as they come in, but we would still maximize teleworking as much as possible. During stage two, city council meetings, committees, boards would continue virtually. That would be both phase one and phase two. Of course, physical distancing signage and floor markings would be installed, customer areas will have sneeze guards, we'll create an educational campaign to encourage the continued use of doing business virtually. We'll have employees that will be monitoring the physical distancing to make sure it happens, and no employee business travel, limiting the city employees from gathering in groups as much as possible. Court would reopen. The library would reopen at this point, but would be controlled on the number of people that could be in there so that we don't have large gatherings. Community center is difficult to know on this one. We would see an opening, we're still trying to work out a plan as to how you maintain social distancing in places like a weight room, or in the, in the exercise room where you have the ellipticals and so forth. So during phase two, we would see at least a limited opening, but we're not certain as to how extensive it would be. And then we'd keep our employees still working on the staggered shifts for both our parks maintenance crews and public works crews. And then in phase three, there's more information that we need from the governor, but essentially that it will restrict, loosen a lot of the restrictions that we'd have on that. So that, that's the plan that we're working on and on how to go forward. Our staff's done just a really nice job, there's still a few unanswered questions, but we're working through those. We've also reached a decision point on the Fourth of July. Ed has told me that I need to make a decision on whether or not we're going to have the Fourth of July events by tomorrow, and I told him I wanted to wait and see what you guys did as far as the emergency goes. With the extension of that emergency and the planning and the companies that are involved with putting together the Fourth of July, we're going to be canceling our Fourth of July events. Now, what that doesn't mean is that we won't be still trying to enforce the illegal fireworks program. So we'll still be going forward with the education program as far as, don't come with illegal fireworks if people are permitted to come by then, and then we'll also have our increased police patrol during that time period as well. But our official event, I'll be canceling tomorrow. So that's what I had, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Appicello, do you have anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any public comments come in, Ron, by chance?
We did, I had eight more that came in, they're all from one person, they're short, and so I think all of them combined won't be more than three minutes.
All right.
These all have come from Laura Joki. The first one reads, please pass help for small business ASAP. Big giant thanks to city council for expediting any financial help to small businesses owners tonight. Under short-term lodging ban enforcement, how is Lincoln City auditing compliance on the ban with short-term lodging facilities? Under the title of Deanna Hinton's letter to second homeowners, yes, please send the letter, help reinforce the message, people need to stay put and not go back and forth. Under the category of just send the letter to everyone, full-timers too. Under the title of Small Business Relief, it's, she wrote, vacation rental owners, chains and national companies should qualify last, if at all. If a vacation rental house owner lives in Lincoln City, the dollars stay local, and that's the point, isn't it? Business, my business doesn't need help from SBDC, and the chamber is biased and a private organization that doesn't represent Main Street. I just need help keeping my lights on while I can't be open, saying I need to sign up with these agencies somehow, suggesting I did something incorrect, and I'm not closed due to law. Business needs to be physically present in Lincoln City, this is about keeping Main Street alive, fund-based, on, fund based on, based on base business expense, not laws. This should be about keeping lights on, please allow up to five thousand dollars. The conditions about having to be a member of the chamber in SBDC are wrong. Under Business Financial Aid, it states, Ed can use his advisory committee to make decisions on how to creatively spend the money within the law. Under the chamber is worthless, it states, as a Main Street business, the chamber is worthless to me, they offer me nothing, please do not force me to participate with them. And under I agree with Dick, she wrote, simply, simple means testing is what is needed, don't create more work in a time of crisis. That's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, let's see, we took care of the resolution, so no outside activity. How about comments from councilors? Mr. Hoagland?
Looking for the button. So just to be clear, Mr. Chandler just canceled our Fourth of July, our whole process, right? And that wasn't up for discussion?
Yeah.
How does that happen?
Easy, nobody...
That is within the authority that you delegated to me, and it was the same with ones that we have done, like the kite festival.
Yep.
How do we talk about that? That's, that's a, that's a totally done deal?
Unless you want to tell me no, don't do it.
I want to say, I want to ask the other six people about their feelings about that.
Okay, ask, ask away.
So there it goes. Hey, guys, what do you think about that?
Okay, Diane? Take it off mute.
Um, I have a hard time with that one, back and forth, but consensus in my house and others say yes, cancel it.
Okay. Mr. Parsons?
It's my favorite holiday, but I completely understand why we're doing it, and I agree.
Sounds good. Ms. Casper?
Um, I think given the resolution timeline of May 31st, it just wouldn't be appropriate to put it together at this time of year.
Mr. Mark?
Yeah, it's, it's a difficult decision, but I think we need to cancel it.
Deanna?
I know that it breaks Ron's heart, but I think I agree with them that we should cancel it.
You just don't want the fireworks, huh? You're hoping that'll be less?
I definitely do not want the fireworks, but I have still been trying to see this thing that's happening down there at the other end of town, and no parking and all those other issues, not wanting to leave my house, that's, but I agree with them.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Hoagland, there you have it.
Great, I just would, I just didn't anticipate just going, hey, guess why I'm doing this, without us talking about it with him, so that was very kind of odd for me, but I, it's, I understand, and I'm not in any kind of way or the other, it's just process, and the other's feelings, so...
All right, fair enough. All right, Mitch, got anything? Diane? Nothing. Judy?
Uh, yeah. So now that we have established the economic package for lodging and non-loging, what are the next steps? When do we see it roll out? Would you need anything more from us? We meet again on Thursday, what? Logistics?
No, I think that we got everything that we need. My hope is that we'll get this sent out tomorrow, Wednesday at the very latest. We'll have, we'll put about a week or so for people to submit their applications, and then we'll begin processing, processing them.
Will we get a little peek at it before you send it out?
Sure, if you'd like.
Yeah, anybody else interested? No, just me? Oh, yeah, we're interested, yeah.
I am.
And I have one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the food program contracts for the list that I had, and we included, if you, if I need, if you need any help, please contact me.
Okay.
Put that together, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Deanna?
I just wanted to say again, I would hope that we could send a letter of appreciation, some kind of, some recognition to the grocery store employees. They've been on the front line with this, and I know that it's a real uncomfortable situation for them, especially because we had so many visitors at first, especially especially because we had so many visitors at first, especially on the 21st, that just wiped the shelves clean, and I know that that was really hard on them. So, I'd like to somehow recognize them and add in the newspaper something.
And Mr. Mark?
This was, this was a trying day, and I was sort of, felt proud to be a part of it, the way that people in the county pulled together, and we worked through some very difficult decisions here tonight. Not an easy thing, so thank you all for, for doing this.
And Mr. Mark, I'll remind you to wear your other hat on Monday and show up at the Budget Committee and make it all balance.
Thanks.
All right. Good for the order, and gee, Mr. Parsons, it's only 10 o'clock, you know, so we were so close. All right, we'll call the meeting adjourned, thank you all.
Good night.
See ya.